Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first day of August 2006. This is the Los Angeles City Council's regular scheduled meetings. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in Council chambers, John Farrow Council chambers in room 340 of City Hall. We invite members of the public to come down and give their public comment for general public comment on items that have been agendized for public comment. If Van Nuys is closer to where you live, we can also take your testimony via remote from our Van Nuys City Hall where we meet the first Friday of each month. We will be there this Friday at 10:00 a.m. in Van Nuys City Hall for our regularly scheduled meeting. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system and rebroadcast in the evening. We also can be caught through the city's homepage at lacity.org where we have live streaming webcast of the council meetings. And if you're not close to a computer or television but close to a telephone, you can always call and listen to our council proceedings by calling council phone, which is 213-621-CITY. We are awaiting a 10th member, which will constitute 2/3 of our 15 members, and a quorum. I want to thank the council members that are here in a timely fashion pursuant to our own council rules. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Labonge, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Rosendale, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Wesson, and Councilmember Zein. We have Councilmember Weiss excused today, so we are waiting one of the following council members to join us, and we will have a quorum. If Councilmembers Cardenas, Weisar, Padilla, Parks, Reyes will please join us as soon as possible, and as soon as we have a quorum, we will begin the meeting. Thank you.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labonge, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Ms. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zein moves, and Mr. Rosendale seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous support for that. That'll be approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be unanimously approved.
Ms. President, there is agendized the flag salute for today.
Okay. As is customary in the first meeting of the week, we have a salute to the flag, Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to, first of all, colleagues, wish Dennis Zein a very happy 60th birthday.
[applause]
And he claims he's 59, but we know he's 60. And ask him to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, the birthday boy, Mr. Dennis Zein. Please, if everybody will rise.
Thank you. No, 59, 59. Please your hand over your heart, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Next order of business.
Ms. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's run through the agenda first, please.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay. Items 1 and 2, colleagues, we will open and close the public hearing on those. I do not see any cards. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's open the roll on 1 and 2, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Let's, I'm sorry, as an ordinance, those will carry over. Why don't we reconsider those and hold those on the desk? If we can open the roll on reconsideration, we are expected to have 12 members on 1 and 2. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's hold those on the table. My apologies. Next item?
Item 3 is an item noticed for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to August 2nd.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuance? If not, we will continue that to the 2nd of August. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing, and there are cards on 5 and 6.
Okay, we will call 5 and 6 special. Let's hold all those on the desk for 12 members as well. Next items.
Items 8 through 25 are items which public hearings have been held. A motion is required on item 25, and as much as there are three reports on the file, and the recommendations appear to differ.
Mr. Zein.
10 and 25, but on 25, I'd like to move the Personnel Committee report.
Okay. Personnel Committee?
Yeah, I'm going to call 10 special.
Okay, we'll call 8 through 10 special, just waiting 12 members for the ordinances. And...
You can just move the Personnel Committee report.
Personnel report, okay.
Thank you.
We've got 12 members now, so we will, let's hold 10 special, but we'll take up 8 and 9 still. 25, we have the Personnel report moved. Any other specials, colleagues?
Who called 9 special?
9 for Mr. Labonge. Other specials? None others? Okay. 8, and then 11 through 25, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. If we can go back to 1, 2, and 4 through 7 now that we have 12 members, please. Nobody wishes to be heard on those?
Ms. President, you did have cards, though, on 5 and 6.
I'm sorry, 5 and 6 were called special, my apologies. So 1, 2, 4, and 7, colleagues.
A definite answer on a matter, Mr. President. Is it a raising of fees for rabbits? Are you familiar with that one? We continued it from last week?
That's on tomorrow's agenda. However, it may have to be continued once again because there's a companion matter that's still in budget and finance.
Okay.
Okay. I want to stand for the rabbits.
So 1 through 2, 4 through 7, I'm sorry, 1 through 2, and 4 and 7, if we can open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. And forthwith on number 1, if there is no objection, please. Next items?
Items 26 through 54, items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Do we have any cards on any of those?
Mr. President, you do, no, no cards on that section.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? Because I see a card for 43 that was just put in, so let's call that special for cards. And anybody else wishing to call any specials on those items? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 55 and 56 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Let's call those special, please, for me.
On the supplemental agenda, item 57 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we do have cards on that, so let's go ahead and call that special for cards. All right. Okay, let's return to the agenda, please.
Do you wish to go back to public comment, or the items called special?
Let's go to the agenda, please. The agendized items.
First item called special would be item 5 for a card from the public.
Okay. Colleagues, we have item number 5 before us first. I'd like to invite Matt Dowd to be our first speaker, and then Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Good morning. It's nice to be back at work. Just want to mention something about this updating the civil parking penalties. I hope an update doesn't just mean increasing the parking penalties. I mean, I see downtown, we come down here, I was here on Friday, and, you know, I got two tickets on a vehicle in the one spot right here. So the guy comes along, goes, "Oh, okay," you know, and I don't want to say I got held up in chambers or anything. But yeah, I just hope an update does mean, like, not an increase across the board. Let's update, like Wendy Gruel's great suggestion, for the, you know, environmentally friendly people, which my friend here, Mr. Labonge, was like a little bit angry about wanting to know about the parking meters. That goes back, so I'm up with this one. But yeah, Wendy, that's a great thing, let's, you know, I think we should get rid of a lot of parking meters around City Hall, just to encourage a few more people to come down here, because parking's tough, and it can get expensive if you pay in every 20 minutes in one of these lots. I'd also like to mention that you can, you can tamper with parking meters in this city quite easily. I've seen it done, I've been approached, and maybe the parking meters need to be updated. No, I'll say that for your one. So yeah, I'm against across-the-board increases, and I hope that's not what we're looking at here. And thanks very much for listening to me. Nice to be the good cop. I'm usually only bad cop once a month when I have my, well, we won't go there.
Mr. Hunt, Michael Hunt, please.
Why are we telling them? Yes, we're talking about number 5, about the parking meters. My name is Michael Hunt from Los Angeles, California, and I do want to talk about the parking enforcement and the budget and everything. I think, like Matt said, that I think we need to reduce the parking meters so more people's able to come down here, get more public parking, and stop the violations being tedious. I think that all of you guys should be listening to really what we're saying and really what we're doing, you know, down here. We're lobbying against the things that we know and things that we have experienced to be a problem in Los Angeles, and we really, you know, would like to correct it. I think that the problems, you know, stem from, you know, too much money going in too many other places instead of, you know, money going into the public, you know, getting new public parking meters and electronic devices so that the public can park free down here and things like that when they come to City Hall. So it's like a catch-22. I think that we should devote our time and money to developing more community-based parking lots where the community can park when they come downtown and do a good job with it. So it's just like, let's reframe it, and let's take that money and develop into a positive aspect where the city of Los Angeles can come down here and park for free, or at least have two hours of free parking when they come to City Hall. And not if only you just got to eat on your plate that you can park anywhere in the city. So with that, you know, and I think that we should reduce the parking meters, people who give fraudulent tickets, and just do a lot of things different. I mean, start reframing it to the city where the city is taking care of itself, and all the Los Angelos that could work and do everything.
Thank you.
Is that my tie?
That's your tie. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog.
I just want to take 10 seconds off of this item. Give me that paperclip back, because you want to, you want to start collecting more money for the parking penalties. You need to get the money you're supposed to first, because, in case you didn't know, every parking meter in the city of Los Angeles needs to be replaced, because all you have to do is take this one little paperclip like this. People are doing that. You take a paperclip, you stick it in the slot, and swoop upward. You go down, then swoop up, and then you get all the free time. So that's how come you got to raise the collection fees, because you're not getting the money you're supposed to make. Zuma Dog for City Council, replace all the city parking meters.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. That closes our comments on this one. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll on 5, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 6 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Michael Hunt is our first speaker, Matt Dowd, and Zuma Dog.
Back on the record, we're talking about, first of all, my name is Michael Hunt. My credentials to be here in Los Angeles, I have a permit from Venice Beach to Ven, but I always get arrested for vending, so I decided to come down here and make copies for the ordinance and things like that. And it's like, I got mixed feelings about these copies. I think that we should use less trees and have verbal ability to get a lot of things that we're doing down and things like that. But all at the same time, I do believe that some paperwork is valid and that the ordinance's consideration to amend, you know, and administration increase. I think that that should be part of the $162,000 that the council get in their payment. I think that you guys should take that out of your pay, you know, and write it off on your taxes or something. I think that that would be cool and use the less trees. But on the same note, I think that the public should be able to have much access to using, you know, public access to creating, you know, some of these things for the public and making it all viable so that the city of Los Angeles, you know, and all the Los Angelinos could use the free copying service, too. So that's it. I don't yield my time right now to Zuma Dog. No, okay, don't yield. Okay, that's cool.
Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you very much, yeah, just another example of trying to recover costs at places where you don't really need to. It's just like increasing the trash fee to buy more police. I think copies and services and the clerk for people should be free, because they're probably down here trying to file lawsuits, and they really need all the help they can get because they're getting ripped off on the street.
Thank you. Any members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. If we can reconsider item 11, please. We can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, why don't we take that item up? Mr. Smith, we have item 11 before us, so we'll take another vote on that. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, let's send that forthwith, please. We can go back to item number 9. Is that our next item?
Item 9 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Okay. Mr. Labonge, item 9.
Good morning, Mr. President, members. I'd like to have the planning staff come to the center table, please. Where's the planning?
Mr. Parks? Good morning, how are you?
Could I get number 12 reconsidered? The controller would like to come in and talk on that issue.
Sure. We'll do that right after number 9 here. Is that okay? Okay. Thank you.
Kevin Jones and Charlie Rouse from our planning department here, who have worked on this particular item, and if you could give us a report on this, and I have some questions I'd like to ask you as well. I thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kevin Jones, a city planner for the Los Angeles City Planning Department. What you have before you is the proposal to add the historic preservation overlay zone to portions of Hancock Park as identified, and the boundaries there listed in the staff report. What is actually before you is the actual adoption of the boundaries, only at this time with instructions from your, the city planning council, or the city council, to instruct the planning department to also prepare a preservation plan prior to the adoption of the full action of the historic preservation overlay zone.
May I ask you a question regarding the environmental clearances for HBOZs and other types of categorical exemptions which may apply to the council's action on this HBOZ for Hancock Park? Will the approval of the HBOZ impede the development of housing?
No.
Okay. Will the approval of the HBOZ give the review board the power to act on zoning and land use matters?
Actually, the review board is advisory to the director of planning. The director of planning ultimately makes the decision on it.
So the answer to that, it would be no?
No.
And does the HBOZ ordinance talk about processing applications on a timely manner, and will the homeowners have problems getting work done on their homes?
No.
Okay. Does the approval of the HBOZ in Los Angeles prohibit the removal of hazards like old wooden roofs, lead paint, or toxic material?
Definitely not.
Okay, and what about installing handicap ramps or remodeling to approve it in efficiency? Does it impede that?
No.
And will the approval of a HBOZ cause dilapidation because of the added cost and delay?
No.
What effect does the HBOZ ordinance have on the teardown of houses? Does the effect, will it have in the HBOZ area?
If it's a contributing structure in the HBOZ, then a certificate of appropriateness is required for it, but it does not prohibit the demolition of structures.
And what effect, so it won't have any negative effect on an HBOZ? Okay. Members, I want to thank the Plum Committee, and Mr. Reyes's committee had this in many HBOZs, so I thank you for your approval on this. Mr. President, I know you have a number of cards. Mr. President, I'd like to ask two things. One, the opposition asked that this be distributed, so each of you got a letter of such from those who are opposed to the HBOZ, and I'd like to call on the opposition to speak at this time, if you would, and then 10-minute public hearing. Those who are in favor?
Okay, we do have 10 cards, so we would set that at 1 minute per speaker if you wanted to hear all 10 speakers for 10 minutes. Is that okay?
Well, I think if you go 5 and 5, how many oppose, how many?
We have 1, 2, 3, 3 opposed, 1 unknown. Irene, Teresa?
She supports it.
Okay, so there's 3 in opposition, and there are, excuse me, 6 in favor, so that is 9 total.
So I think you could ask if those who are opposed, they go first.
Okay.
And if you do, 1 minute clock, 5 and 5, whatever works.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll set the clock at 5 minutes total, and we'll do 2 minutes per speaker, but this last speaker would only have a minute, depending on how the first 2 speakers go forward. But Fred Gaines, Stanley Tritell, and Cheryl Rosenberg will be the first 3 speakers.
Excuse me, should we have public comment?
I'm sorry. Mr. Gaines is before us now, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, honorable members. My name is Fred Gaines with the Law Office of Gaines and Stacey. I represent the Hancock Park Homeowner Association. We're here today to protest the adoption of a general exemption under SEQA with regard to this matter. Under your own SEQA guidelines, a general exemption is only allowed where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. This is a very large area that's being rezoned, over 1,200 homes, about a square mile of property, and this is a rezoning. If you, despite the little show that we had here between the councilman and the staff, you know the reality of these HBOZs. If you want to do anything to expand your home, this includes multifamily zones, so we're talking about limiting the number of units that will ultimately build in this area. We're talking about limiting the ability to do solar roofs, to do all kinds of improvements that include modern technology and modern materials at the sites. The added expense and delays will certainly deter people from making these kinds of changes, and the city has taken the tack that on all of these, we now have over 20 HBOZs, that they have done absolutely no environmental review, that where they've just decided it's absolutely certain it cannot be possible that there's an environmental impact of these ordinances. Instead of doing environmental study like other cities have done, in San Jose, in Pasadena, in San Diego, where they have adopted HBOZ ordinances, they have done environmental review, including full EIRs. But in this case, the city is saying that it cannot be possible that there's an environmental effect, no matter how many of these HBOZs we do, no matter how big they are, and that is just an incorrect finding. Do the environmental review. You can then go still past your ordinance, but you can do it knowing what the effects are and following the process set forth in SEQA. So we would ask that you not adopt a general exemption, go through that in this case. And, Mr. President, I just want to wish Dennis Zein a very happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Appreciate that. Stanley Tritell is our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Stanley Tritell. I'm a resident of Hancock Park. I also am representing Hancock Park Homeowners Association, and we're opposed to this motion right now. I just want to ask the people quietly who are here opposed to stand up. Please stand up, those who are opposed. Now, you see, there is opposition, and there's many more people. Yes, they couldn't be here today because they do make a living, and Fred said what he had to say, so we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Rosenberg is our next speaker. Cheryl Rosenberg is our next speaker.
My name is Cheryl Rosenberg, and I'm opposed and against the HBOZ. I'm a member of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, and I would like to tell you that there are hundreds of residents in Hancock Park who are opposed to the HBOZ, and I feel it would be a huge mistake, although we are for preservation. Preservation has been in place voluntarily for the last 80 years, and we don't need a group over our heads acting like it's a police state telling us what to do. It's our property rights. And unfortunately, since the HBOZ has been talked about for the last couple of years, it's been pitting neighbor against neighbor. And I grew up in Hancock Park, and it's always been very loving neighbor between neighbor, and all of this has changed that. And I feel that we should not have the HBOZ and go back to the old ways where Hancock Park is preserved anyways beautifully and neighbors love their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one minute left of Zan Marquis would like to come up for against, or Zan Marcus, for against side, going once. Is there a Zan Marcus? We have about a minute left on this side, so go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name is Zan Marquis. I live at 141 North June Street. On several occasions, Councilman LaBange has promised that this HBOZ would not go forward without a vote of the residents to make sure there's a great deal of support for it, overwhelming support. That has not happened, and we want to know why.
Thank you. We now have a couple more cards. We have eight cards on the four side, and I'll just go through them in order when we set the clock at one minute to try to get as many people on as possible, starting with Cindy Shavata. Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Cindy Shavata. And then Jolene Snett will be our next speaker after that.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Shavatalkine, and I'm a resident of Hancock Park. I'm also a member of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association Board, vice president of the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council, a member of the Hancock Park Historic Preservation Advocacy Group, L.A. Conservancy. I'm here to speak on behalf of the HBOZ, and we are totally in favor in our neighborhood. I have for the council several hundred, close to 1,000 signatures on petitions that we collected over the last two years, which I would like to leave for you. We also put up 650 lawn signs before cultural heritage drove through, and I would like to ask everybody here in favor of the HBOZ for Hancock Park to please stand. Lot of support this morning. I have a letter from the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council, the L.A. Conservancy, the Homeowners Association, and the advocacy group that I would like to enter into the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jolene Snett, and if you would just hold on one second, Jolene. Some folks wanted translation, and we're making sure they have equipment for that, so hold on one moment, and we'll start in just a sec. Do we, do we have the translation equipment up and running? Are we still waiting? Hold on one more minute. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jolene Snett, and I live in Hancock Park on Las Palmas Avenue, and I'm the co-founder of the Hancock Park Historic Preservation Advocacy Group, the one Cindy spoke about where we collect hundreds of signatures. I would just like to enter into record a wonderful speech given by the president of the National Historic Trust, talking about teardowns, how they're running rampant throughout the United States, and also a map that shows California as one of five states in the United States that has experienced teardowns, or rash of teardowns, in more than 21 communities. Also, I would like to encourage the city, if they're looking at environmental hazards, that tearing down a house and replacing it tears down old trees and really destroys the city. And I think the time now is to step up to the plate like we have in 21 other HBOZs across the city and say, the time is now to preserve Hancock Park for our future, for the City of Los Angeles, and for our United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Irene, Irene Tressen, or Tressen? Irene Tressen? Tressen, excuse me. And then Margaret Byrne.
I just have a very few things to say. 35 years ago and since then, Hancock Park and that whole area was very united. All you have to do is check with Tom LaBange's office, although he wasn't there at the time, when we fought for the preservation of our trees on Highland Avenue, when practically the whole city came together. I'm sorry that we're not that united now, but hopefully that will be solved. I'm very much in favor as far as largeness of it is, that it's not so Highland Park, which is one of the first 10 or so HBOZs, is considerably larger than Hancock Park and Windsor Square together, probably. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Margaret Byrne, and then Peggy Giffen.
My name is Margery Byrne. I live at 116 North Las Palmas Avenue in Hancock Park, and I'm here to ask you to please pass this. Our councilman has backed us, and I just want to point out that this preservation is about houses and not people. For some reason, there's a small group that's been very active and making it very personal. But these houses were built in the 20s. They're going to be here, I hope, after I'm dead and all these young people are dead too. They need to be preserved. The city owes us a favor, really, that we are spending the money and the time and attention to keep Hancock Park really a beautiful historic neighborhood in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Giffen to be followed by Victoria Vilken, Vilkers, excuse me.
People who want to tear home, tear down existing homes and build new ones have properties to choose from across the entire city, but people like me who want to live in historic homes have very few to choose from. Please preserve this beautiful neighborhood for generations to come by approving the HBOZ for all of Hancock Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Vilken, or Vilkers, sorry, Vilkers.
Thank you very much. We really would like you to support us in our HBOZ. What we have in Hancock Park is a wonderful set of homes similar to this building. They're very historic. It's like owning a Pizarro, a Monet, a Rembrandt. We're asking you to preserve them. Please don't let people paint over them. Thank you.
Susan Grossman, and then Greg Glasser will be our last speaker.
My name is Susan Grossman. I live at 627 Lilian Way, and my husband and I are 20-year residents of Hancock Park. I'm also the vice president of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, established in 1948. I want to make one statement of clarification. The Hancock Park Homeowners Association, established in 1948, is a nonprofit mutual benefit organization, and it learned a few weeks ago that because of an administrative oversight, the FSB has placed the association in a suspended status. The association immediately acted to file the necessary forms, and the FSB has now placed us once again in good standing. In June of this year, a small group of opponents of the HBOZ took our corporate name and are now publicly representing themselves as our successors and using the same name. This group does not hold public hearings and elections or meetings as we do, and has no legal right to represent themselves as us and claim to be a representative body of the Hancock Park community. I just want to reiterate my support of the HBOZ. Hancock Park is part of the iconography of Los Angeles and in the world imagination of Los Angeles, and preserving it is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Greg Glasser.
Good morning. My name is Greg Glasser. I live in Hancock Park at 500 North McCadden Place. I'm a board member of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, established in 1948. I also chair the Historic Preservation Overlay Zone Steering Committee. We're fortunate to be working on saving these homes. We've been in process for an HBOZ for over six years, and we appreciate you bringing this up and bringing this through for us at this time, and we look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public comment. Mr. LaBange, do you want to continue?
Thank you. If I could ask planning staff to the table again, Mr. Rouse, and Mr. Jones, Mr. Sutton, if you would. If you could, because I know you received a copy of this letter, could you comment on the letter stating the concerns regarding the cumulative impacts related to the adoption of other HBOZs in the City of Los Angeles? You know, members, the historic preservation movement is a very important movement in Los Angeles, and I was pleased as then a deputy for John Ferraro, when the 4th District used to go across the city, down to the Harbor Freeway here, to assist Mr. Ferraro, now under the good stewardship of Mr. Reyes, of the first HBOZ in Angelino Heights, and also the second HBOZ, which was once in the 4th, in Melrose Hill, Mr. Ferraro pushed through with the work of everyone, with that now being in Mr. Garcetti's district. Mr. Rouse or other gentleman, could you comment on the direct relationship to the cumulative HBOZ citywide?
The cumulative impacts are negligible as far as we're, the normal HBOZs are in areas either multiple-family zoned or single-family zoned. They do not do anything as far as entitlements are concerned to add, subtract, or otherwise affect densities in the areas of the HBOZs. We do look at the design of buildings. We make sure that contributing structures are not affected by development, and we look at non-contributing buildings that are replaced and/or vacant lots that are developed so that they are designed in a manner which is contributing to the historic preservation overlay zone. However, we do not affect the density of the projects that are coming up, so.
And is it appropriate to rely on the general exemption? Maybe Mr. Sutton may want to answer that. Okay, Charles.
As far as the general exemption is concerned, we believe that a finding could be made by the city council that both the general exemption and a categorical exemption under category five, number 13, zone changes or variances that merely conform the existing zoning to an existing use where the existing use was legally commenced. In this case of Hancock Park, we have an R1 zone and RE15 zone property, which will remain in the R1 and RE15 zones, which basically conforms the existing use to the existing zone on the site. So you could use either one of those. Actually, the city attorney believes you can make a finding adopting both of them because there's a finding.
Good, thank you. You support HBOZs?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Members, I just want to let you know, 1978, I started working for John Ferraro, and I had the opportunity to work for the great John Ferraro and the effort of the preservation movement and the neighborhood movement has rapidly increased over the years. The one thing about preservation, it's something as someone spoke of, and in the Wilshire District, if you go on Serrano, you could see what was once a neighborhood similar to Hancock Park but not quite between 4th and 5th. And because of the no possibility for an HBOZ 40 years ago, 30 years ago, 20 years ago, you see a rapidly changed neighborhood. I believe HBOZs enhance a neighborhood. I believe HBOZs do bring about a stability to a neighborhood that it doesn't change. And I say to all constituents, those who are for this and those who are not for this, this will have a positive impact on our community, and I, and the planning staff will work to make sure that it has a positive impact on the community, because I don't think we would want to ever entertain an HBOZ or any type of zone that would have a negative impact. The City of Los Angeles is a city of great neighborhoods, and fortunately, to those who live at Hancock Park, you live one of the great neighborhoods, and with the HBOZ, you'll have even a greater neighborhood. And I just would like to ask for all your support as we come to a vote on this. Mr. President, I thank you. I thank you in the, in the action of the words of late John Ferraro, who was representative of this area for 35 years. The first motion for this was introduced in 2001, and now it's 2006. I think we should act upon it, and then we should help establish what is a 90% area of historic qualified preservation. I know Mr. Bernstein is here from the planning department. Do you have anything you want to add, Mr. Bernstein? Thank you for that. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes will be our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we did review this item on several occasions in committee. We went through various discussions. As indicated in your report, of the 1,282 parcels included in the HBOZ, 1,171 are contributors of primarily 1920s and 1930s period revival architecture. So it gives you a sense of the predominance of a certain architectural style which HBOZs are trying to preserve, and I can share with you that overlay zones, historic overlays, are just as pertinent in moderate, high-income and low-income areas. The city is doing everything in its power to put forth the kind of tools that allows us to fill those gaps, put forth policies that allows us to preserve our architectural gems while not penalizing the community. So I just want to put that on the record as our effort moves forward in trying to celebrate the great architectural history of this great city. So I'd like to also encourage an i-vote and support my colleague in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaBange?
Mr. Reyes, I'd like to ask that the staff with this matter that is now before us amend the findings to include the general exemption and category exemption as referenced by staff as we move this forward.
The council adopts those.
Council adopts those findings as so stated.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this from the council? If not, let's.
Do we need any clarification?
Mr. City Attorney?
No, no, we just need the lang, the clerk will need that language to add to the record.
Okay.
Re-read it into the record of Hannity?
Why don't you hand that over to the clerk, and we'll make sure that gets into the record. And, Mr. LaBange?
I call for an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can please open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. We can send that forthwith. We have number 10 next, and then number 12 will try to reconsider in a second. But Ms. Grul?
Item 10.
Okay, item 10 was called special by Mr. Stein, but it is transportation issue. Is that correct? So precedence would go to the committee chair. So Ms. Grul, you're recognized.
Dennis and I work very well together, so we're, we're a team on that. If I could have the department and our commissioner come forward, and I think we have also represented from LAPD if they're still here. Captain McCarthy. Colleagues, we have before us today a new ordinance related to bandit taxicabs. We have close to 2,000 bandit taxicabs in the City of Los Angeles. These are taxicabs that have not been registered. Many of them do not have a valid driver's license, don't have insurance, also include when they're caught, many of them have contraband in their vehicles. And what we want to do today is assure the public that we are doing everything we can, whether you are a visitor to Los Angeles or a resident of Los Angeles, to, that we are working towards limiting the number of bandit taxicabs in the city. We want to make sure they understand that we believe they're entitled to be inspected for mechanical reliability, cleanliness, and safety, and are properly insured. That's what our Department of Transportation does for those that are franchised by the City of Los Angeles. They also do background checks. So we think that this is a critically important issue in Los Angeles. If you look at some of the statistics, about a third of the bandit taxicab drivers have criminal rap sheets that would have prevented them from being able to drive in the City of Los Angeles. Many are the subject of warrants. What we found is that there's no question that these illegal found is that there's no question that these illegal bandit taxicab operators pose a threat to public safety. And so what you have before us today is an agreement with the Los Angeles Police Department to work hand in hand cooperatively with the Department of Transportation, who has done an excellent job with the limited resources they've had and the limited powers they've had, because those DOT officers are unable to pursue a vehicle in the city of Los Angeles, inability to be able to go in all parts of the city. So we're providing additional funds to the Department of Transportation to support those DOT officers, as well as a partnership with the Los Angeles Police Department. I know that one of the things we're working on with the Taxicab Commission is also where we can increase fines and the seriousness of this. But right now, we have the city, if you are driving a cab illegally, it can result in a $1,000 fine or up to six months in jail. Additionally, the LAPD will have the authority to impound bandit taxicabs for up to 30 days. We have with us today, colleagues, members of the taxicab industry who are franchisees, who are here, who follow the rules, who ensure that the people who drive their vehicles are insured, that they have valid driver's license, and have no felonies as they serve our city of Los Angeles. Colleagues, we do have tips that we are providing to the media, how to tell whether a taxicab is legal or illegal. Additionally, this is the seal that individuals can see on the side of a vehicle. Unfortunately, this is one of those that the bandit taxicab drivers use, which looks very similar. We encourage the public to call us and let us know if they think the individual who is driving a problem, to let us know, get the taxicab number. But more importantly, we're going to be proactive with the Los Angeles Police Department and the Department of Transportation. I know I'm over my time. We do have one card, Mr. President.
You've got six minutes as the first speaker, so you can keep going.
I have six minutes. Okay, so I'm not 42 seconds over.
You have another two minutes and 15 seconds.
What I'd like to do is ask briefly from the Department of Transportation, LAPD, and our commission, if they'd like to say a few words before we hear from my colleagues, as well as the, I think we have a speaker card.
Councilmember Gruel has been an excellent spokesperson for this issue. A quick survey of our counterpart cities around the U.S. have found that the city of L.A. has the worst problem with respect to these bandit taxicabs. While indeed, we have had our investigators at the Los Angeles Department of Transportation working on this full-time, and they have done an excellent job within the limited resources that they've had available to them, we indeed support the concept of expanding this to our partnership with the LAPD, utilizing their officers. We've done it as a matter of routine. In other instances, this more formally puts the program together. We are calling for a 12-month pilot program by which we'll be able to evaluate the results and further target the needed resources to expand the program and to provide to the city council and the city and residents an opportunity to see the effectiveness of this program. We believe that the roughly 1.3% increase in the drop, flag drop rate, and the $30 per taxi is more than made up for with the added addition in the flag drop, and that the drivers will be able to recoup that cost. We think that this is a matter of public safety, and that it is essential that the public be well-served by this action.
Kevin McCarthy, Los Angeles Police Department. We're looking forward to the partnership with the cab companies and the DOT. We believe it's a public safety issue for reasons stated: uninsured drivers, underinsured drivers, the uninspected vehicles, and drivers that go through on no background checks. So we're looking forward to the program, and I think it would benefit the benefit the city of Los Angeles.
Joe Chizik, President of the Board of Taxicab Commissioners. I just wanted to thank everyone that has worked so hard, especially Councilmember Gruel and Councilmember Zion. I know you've been on the forefront as well, and it'll take me 20 minutes, but I'm going to thank everyone for the assistance that we got on this. But this is a no-brainer. This is one that we have to have. I travel a lot. I see many cities where they don't have these kinds of issues, where legitimate people that are trying to earn a living driving a taxicab have their income and have competition from criminals. And I'm sorry to be that graphic about it, but that's how I feel about those people that break the law. Thank you very much. It's been a long time. As my colleague over here, Tom Drischler, feels, says to me a few minutes ago, he feels like he just delivered a baby. It's been that long. So anyways, thank you again.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. And Joe was right. This has been something that's been talked about for several years, and then Mr. Zion also introduced a motion in January to also say we need to jumpstart this and move forward. And so I'm pleased that we're standing here today, letting the public know that we're going to protect them, we're going to support the legitimate taxicab industry in Los Angeles, and those that count on those fares for their well-being and, you know, quality of life and living. And so we think this is really a win-win situation for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zion, to be followed by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Labange.
I'm sorry. Could we have the one, I think we have one public speaker card, maybe to go ahead and let them speak first?
Sure.
Mr. Zion, is that all right with you? Is that what we talked about?
Okay. Let me get this right now. We have...
Couple. Okay.
William Roush, and then Angel Calvo as well.
Good morning, members of the council. William Roush from Yellow Cab and United Checker Cab were two of the franchiseed taxicab companies in the city of Los Angeles. I know the rest of the industry joins me in thanking the staff, thanking the Taxi Commission, thanking the city council, and the LAPD for putting this forward. This is the first giant leap forward that the city has had in the fight against bandit taxicabs. This is going to be a great benefit to our hard-working drivers. It's going to benefit public safety. It's going to benefit the city economically, and I just wanted to thank the city for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angel Calvo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Angel Calvo. I'm with Engineers and Architects Association. There already is a city classification that's supposed to do bandit taxicab enforcement, and we represent that classification. Now, we have tried to work out these issues, and apparently the city, or at least the DOT staff, has had no interest in doing that. At Transportation Committee, Councilmember Wesson instructed DOT staff to meet with the union and work out these issues. They did not meet with us. I think the comment was made about requiring taxicab companies and bandit taxicabs to follow the rules. Would it be so much to ask the city to follow the rules in this issue? If the council approves this item as scheduled today, that will leave the union no option but litigation. We have already filed two unfairs on this. The second one is going to be heard on October the 2nd. Again, if this is approved today, after all this time that DOT could have worked out these issues with us, and they wouldn't even give us a phone call, we will have no option but to go the litigation route and try and recover dollar for dollar every dollar that's going to be spent on this program to be given or awarded to our members. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public comment. Back to Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend the Transportation Committee, Wendy, the work you did along with your committee members. I know Bill Rosendahl's on that committee, and I don't know the other committee members, but to make this happen, this is a long time in coming, also the Taxi Commission. I know every time a commissioner comes up for confirmation, I hit those bandit taxicab, bandit taxicab, so I'm really pleased to see it happen. Our new general manager, not so new anymore, getting your feet wet in what's going on with this situation. Being a reserve officer with the LAPD, I've had the opportunity to go out and work with the Department of Transportation investigators. They're understaffed, number one. Number two, they don't have the resources to pull over these bandits as they're picking up the patrons. It's out of control, citywide. And when you look at the poorer economic areas of the city, that's where the bandit taxicabs seem to really flourish. Hollywood area has a problem with it. The airport, I think, has done a real good job in maintaining control. For other parts of the city, east Los Angeles, the San Fernando Valley, what this will do is bring that resource that Department of Transportation needs to pull the folks over. DOT has investigators, but they don't have the red lights. They don't have the siren. We're not talking about getting in pursuits. We're just talking about the basic, essential pull a person over. They don't have that tool. This will give that tool to them with the Los Angeles Police Department. And the combined efforts between LAPD and DOT will bring an end to this. And what amazes me, other cities across the country have eliminated this problem. We have a huge problem with it, and the investigators are so frustrated because they don't have the tools. It's like having someone come and trim your tree and give them a saw instead of a chainsaw. You need a chainsaw to chop down that tree. You can do it the old method. It's going to take forever. So what they're doing is one at a time. This will really make the community of Los Angeles much safer. A couple of questions for the captain. How many resources do we anticipate deploying with this? I know it's going to be in overtime, where the industry's putting in money, where there'll be a slight increase in the fare, so the general population won't be impacted in any way, shape, or form. How often, what parts of the city, because I know it can be eradicated, some of the deployment that we're going to be working with the DOT on that?
The money will compensate about 128-hour shifts. There'll be an administrator at work out of my office. We'll work with DOT, the taxicab companies, to identify where the critical locations are, the time, the dates, and develop a strategy for that. I mean, we don't have that now. We haven't sat down at the table. But we'll come up with strategies for time, places, and as the target gets harder, we'll increase our operations.
And your plan is to eliminate the 2,000 bandit taxicabs from operating in the city of Los Angeles. That's the ultimate plan?
Yes, it is.
Because oftentimes, you say, we're just going to control it. This is a situation, and I have to commend the industry that's been very patient in going along this cumbersome process, because they're losing major dollars every single day. And the patrons that utilize those illegal band... I hate to say illegal. They're bandits. That's what they are, plain and simple, bandits. They're preying on the population, especially the unsuspecting tourists to Los Angeles that hail the cab, and here we go. They have no idea what's going to happen to them. So the dollars will be sufficient. How long a period of time are we talking about?
I think the program is a pilot program for one year.
Okay, and after that, we reevaluate and then take...
Reevaluate, re-up it, modify it, or make it go away, whatever.
And I also want to come in on EAA. I had meetings with EAA representatives. I tried to get this matter resolved a long time ago, tried to bring this to completion, to make it happen, to bring the marriage between LAPD and DOT happen. And unfortunately, it hasn't happened. I think for the public interest and the city of Los Angeles, imperative that we not wait any longer. And I understand the city attorney has approved this plan that we're going to move forward with, with the LAPD and DOT. Whatever challenges are down the road, we have to face those at the time. But we are jeopardizing the public. We're frustrating DOT investigators, and we're really not doing the service that we need to do for the people of Los Angeles. So I give highly congratulations, and again, to the commission and your commissioners on that Taxi Commission. This is a major, major monument, monumental task that's been accomplished, and bringing this together is going to benefit all the people. So congratulations to all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
This is truly where the rubber hits the road, you see. This is government in action. On January 20th, Dennis Zion asked me to second his motion, and here we are, six months later, actually with action being taken by the city government. So first, I want to applaud the leadership of Wendy Gruel in taking it from a motion through the process and bringing us to this point. Why are we doing this, folks? We're doing this because, frankly, the bandit cabs, 2,000 of them, are violating the law. Number one, they don't have insurance on their vehicles. Number two, we don't know about their character and background and what kind of people they are. Number three, we don't know about the safety of their cabs. We don't know about the four wheels taking us from place to place. These are important to us as people and as citizens of Los Angeles. There's also the illegal limo people who still come to the airport, that is a part of my area there, and say, hey, you want to ride in the limo? And we don't know who's taking us and where. So by having the LAPD, when I heard 120 shifts, of eight-hour shifts, we know the LAPD has the ability to stop the car and make an arrest. They have the ability to follow through. And this follow-through will send a message to all of those bandit cabs. Your day is over, and we in the city of Los Angeles are going to make sure that the legitimate cabs get the support, and that we, the people, the customers, get safety, we get a car that's insured, and we have a character who's driving it who is upright and moral. So this is outstanding, and I urge all my colleagues to unanimously vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange is our next speaker from the right wing this time.
When's the last time you were in a cab, Captain?
When I was visiting New York.
All right. Let's have Ride a Cab Day in Los Angeles. I think it would help us do that. I know it's a little challenge. But I think this is all a very important process as we improve the cabs and the issue, because there's nothing worse than an unlicensed vehicle, because the person, the patron, is thinking everything's great. They get in a taxi, and then all of a sudden, if a challenge, an accident happens, there's no net there to help and cover for that. And Ms. Gruel, thank you for your service, Ms. Wendy Gruel. Thank you for your service on this effort here. Ms. Jet, thank you for the Department of Transportation Commissioners. Thank you. And the CIO supports this, so I thank Mr. Fujioka on that. Just make sure you have the backup with the LAPD. I know there's a traffic officer, since Mr. Zion, whose birthday it is today, left at the police department. We need one person clap that he left the police department. Did he ever give you a ticket, Bill? Anyway, I think we, traffic, safety, enforcement, that's all we're asking. Enforcement to make it safe, red light, green light, like Engineer Bill. Make sure it's safe for people. Thank you all.
Mr. Zion, and then Ms. Gruel.
I didn't really leave the police department. I still have the handcuffs, Tom Labange. So don't go too far away, Tom Labange. I still got those. Just one issue. Do we have a hotline if people want to report the bandit taxicabs or what they suspect? Do we have a hotline? Do they think they've been victimized? A number that they can call? We haven't discussed that.
We're going to work through the 311 number initially, and then establish as part of the pilot program, an additional hotline for them to call in on.
So if they call, they call 311, and then who do they ask for? Because 311 ambassadors, is it DOT? Is it LAPD? Is it, who are they going to ask for then?
DOT.
Fast with Department of Transportation, and then your folks there will process it through.
Yes.
So if people get victimized or they suspect it, 311, DOT.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I just, I don't know, Mr. Fujioka, you came to the table. Did you have a chance to, did you want to say something?
I just, very quickly, I wanted to speak to the issue raised by EAA. A statement was made that EA, that, by EAA, that DOT has made no attempt, not even a phone call to resolve this. Subsequent to direction given at that Tea Committee by, I believe, Councilman Wesson, a meeting was held with EAA. So it's unfortunate that that misrepresentation was made. Every reasonable attempt has been made to address this, but it's the opinion of my office and your city attorney that this, that this issue can go forward right now, and that it doesn't meet, doesn't require the meet and confer process, because LAPD, as everyone know, historically has played a very significant role in enforcement of the bandit taxicab issue. But regardless, it can go forward right now. I would urge that you support this request, and we do move it forward. It's a critical issue for the city, and it's been, it's been handled by our management staff appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Fujioka, and again, thank you to everyone. We're looking forward to seeing the results particularly, and we'll ask for some report backs as part of the item we have today. But thank you to all of the members of the city council who have been advocates, again, Taxi Commission, the department, and LAPD, and we look forward to making this work and make people in Los Angeles know that we are on top of it and being proactive on the issue of bandit taxicabs in the city. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. If we can reconsider item 12, please. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, I mean, indulge you in one thing also. Could we have a reconsideration number six for a technical amendment on just what appears to be a one-word typo?
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and open, if anybody else wishing to be heard on reconsideration of six? Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay.
On the summary section, the second to the last line should say increase in the general fund instead of decrease.
That's an important correction. We will make that change. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll again on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. If we can go back to number 12, and Mr. Parks. If we can go back to number 12, and Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Ms.—our city controller.
Yes, the city controller is with us, I know. We'll go ahead and grab her. Here, she's coming.
Yes. Ms. Chick came to us with a proposal dealing with the issue of funds and creating new funds in the city. And we had been struggling with this for a number of months, in that we have over 1,000 funds already in place. Many of them create significant time and labor issues for Ms. Chick to monitor them, keep track of them. And there's always a concern as to whether all of these funds are necessary. So she's proposed a procedure on how new funds would come about as it relates to the city. And let me let her start and give her presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks and Chair of the Committee. I'm here because this is normally something that wouldn't be paid attention to. It's kind of one of those accountant-greenshade things. However, it's a huge step in bringing this city towards fiscal responsibility in the 21st century. Why do I say that? Because we have, in the city of Los Angeles now today, 1,012 special revenue funds. That's a lot of little pots of gold scattered around the city. It costs a lot of accounting resources to oversee and manage those 1,012 special funds in which are held hundreds of millions of public taxpayer dollars. My audits have uncovered all kinds of problems with special revenue funds. Examples: Department of Transportation, who was just here before you; Building and Safety; Department of Recreation and Parks. Sometimes the dollars aren't being spent for the purposes for which they were intended. Sometimes the dollars are just not being spent. They're just sitting there, instead of being rolled over into the general fund and being used to hire police officers, paramedics, keep libraries open, open swimming pools that are closed, et cetera. Fiscal responsibility. What you're doing today—thank you—is adopting Budget and Finance Committee report. I want to thank the CAO and the CLA, because we have come together before you as a team in this report, and it says the following. One, you are giving the city controller's office a voice in the creation going forward of new special funds. You don't have to listen to my voice, because it is your charter-mandated response. Well, the report says that, and, you know, I used to be one of you. So in the letter I wrote you back in October, I said, "Give me a voice, but you don't have to listen to it." But now, when you're ready to create a new special fund, because sometimes there's a need for it, I have the opportunity, quickly, to come before you with a report and give you, based on some very good criteria that the CAO and the CLA have created, and any others I want to add, and come before you and give you my opinion, the controller's office's professional opinion, on whether this special fund is needed. The second part of the report is the CAO coming forward with a very good evaluation program, looking backwards and forward, looking at the 1,012 funds that exist already and reporting back to you on whether they all are being spent properly and whether they should exist. And a whole program going forward on how new funds would also be evaluated regularly. So more transparency, because there's more information now that will be done in public; more accountability, because you're going to have the information you need; and just better fiscal responsibility. Oh, and I forgot, another favorite one: efficiency. Because with fewer special funds and funds being used properly, the city will have to expend less accounting resources to oversee them. So thank you for, I'm assuming, adopting this report and for giving my office an opportunity to be one of the advising voices to you going forward.
Thank you very much, Controller Chick. Mr. Parks?
You know, one thing I'd just like to ask— in fact, Mr. Smith brought this up in committee—I was just going to ask on 1A of the report, there was some discussion, and you could maybe refresh my memories, that we had said that the council should retain the authority as a policy issue, but yet in the wording of the report that says the council will only consider a new fund if it's—if the report is forthcoming. I'm just wondering whether that language represented what the discussion was in the council, in the committee.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this one? Yes.
I believe—and I wasn't present for that conversation, but it was my intent from the original letter to recognize that the power and the final decision-making on creating a new fund rests with the council and the mayor. And it's why specifically—what it does is it says, "Within 30 to 60 days, I shall present a report." It says you won't vote to create the fund until you receive that report. You don't necessarily have to agree with the report. Sit.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
That was—the concerns I had in committee was that it came forward as the controller would control this, but it's still the policy committees of the council that will eventually make the decision. So I think this language reflects that now, that she can write a report and we can say yes or no, you're crazy, or you're absolutely right, but we still retain that authority. And that was what was important. So thank you.
Thank you. And our new financial policies—I know were a central part of our presentations to our bond rating agencies just last week, so we thank you for your help, and Mr. Parks, for your great work as chairing the committee. And we're still chasing that elusive AAA bond rating, which one day we'll get, but we still are the highest-rated big city in America. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange have pressed their buttons, so Mr. Rosendahl first, and then Mr. Labange.
Just a quick comment. First, I want to applaud the controller for her leadership, watching her as controller with a fine, sharp pencil and a good magnifying glass, going over all kinds of departments and issues. So I just want to applaud you for that kind of leadership as controller. And Bill, do you have any problem with this?
Express my very strong support for this. The fact that, you know, our controller mentioned a number of special funds we have creates just a host of issues. The fact that it strengthens our financial policies is extremely important. Consulman—our President Garcetti mentioned that during the bond rating meetings, our financial policies came up. And in fact, although that elusive AAA is—we're just not there yet, as a consequence of the recent meeting with the rating agencies, we're rated strong in terms of fiscal management. There are only two other cities in the United States who are rated strong. It's Anchorage, Alaska, and New York. And so that is very, very significant for us to be—to get that strong rating. It's a new rating right now, but it gets us closer towards that AAA. But this is something that we absolutely need to do. And I support the controller's, what she presented as a justification for this, and recommend your approval.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because our numbers guy is you, and we trust you, Bill, and you've done a great job in the role you're in, and you're backing it. And for Greg Smith and I, who, you know, we're good friends, but we're not always on the same wavelength on different issues. We're on the same wavelength on this issue, because we both believe in fiscal responsibility, and we look forward to this being passed by our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Madam Controller, Mr. CAO. On the—is it 12?
Item 12?
12, no, 12. How many different categories of funds?
Oh.
1200 or 12,000?
Well, there's 1,012 existing special funds.
Right, okay.
I don't believe we have them categorized. There's 1,012 different special funds in existence today. That's a lot.
Now, does that include, like, the fire hydrant fund?
Oh, that's—that's one of them.
You know, and it would include the street improvement fund?
Oh, yeah.
And if—when someone develops a property and they put the money in and it never gets fixed, it's still there. I remember you did a very good audit when I was on audits on the public works funds. Question, is there a time in the future that all these funds of the 1,012 could be broken down into public work area funds, public safety funds, arts, and—you know, so we could look at it and see if our funds are working? I think that would be great, to break them down into little category, so that we look at the different areas. How many categories would you say, Mr. CAO, does the city have? When I say—you've got public works, you've got public safety, you've got art and parks and—
But you can divide them differently. You could divide it by capital improvement funds, you know, special services funds, special fee funds.
So if I could just have a friendly amendment to add that, to break up the 1,012, so you could look at it in categories to see where we worked?
We can come back with that, and maybe—with—excuse me—maybe with that, a recommendation and sunset some of the smaller ones. Because we have funds that literally have less than $100 in them.
Right, yeah. Consolidate some of those funds—
Yes.
—into that. And now, last question for the record. Anchorage and New York, who had the better rating?
No, I'm just saying, there's only two other cities in the United States who received this strong rating in terms—for on the fiscal management category.
But Anchorage and New York? But who was first, New York or Anchorage?
They both received the same rate.
Same—oh, same rate. Okay, same rate. An A's an A.
An A's an A.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, to conclude. Mr. Parks?
I just have one question. We were waiting for Bill. I don't know if we dealt with this at the committee. We had asked to review the 1,000 existing funds. When could we expect that review to be—
That was one of our summary report backs. So that's consistent with Consulman Labange said. It's one of our summary report backs, because all that 1,200, there are absolutely a number of them we should eliminate, we should sunset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. If nobody else wishes to be heard, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Thank you very much, Controller Chick. If we can reconsider item 24, please. If there's nobody wishes to be heard on that, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 24, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And if there's no objection, there's been a request to continue that till August 4th, this Friday, the Van Nuys City Hall meeting. So if there's no objection, we will do that. Next item, please.
Item 43 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, we have item 43 before us now, and like to have Zuma Dog come forward on item Nope, you're no good? Okay. We'll close the—43 is before us. If—go on once? Okay. Close the public hearing on that. If we can open the roll on 43, if no council members wish to be heard, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We will go to the next items, please.
Items 55 and 56 were being held on the desk, and there are cards from the public.
Okay, have we held public hearing on this already or not?
Public hearing has been held in the Rules and Elections Committee on both items.
I know, Mr. Parks, I'll come down and speak on this as well, but if you'd like to start out, why don't you go ahead and—thank you.
I want to, first of all, thank the city attorney, because he has put—Deion's put so much work into this very, very quickly, to where—with a short time since the motion that we've come full circle to have a new rule in the city council that deals with decorum in the chambers. And although it doesn't go as far as some of us would like, but it goes as far legally as we can move forward. It gives some clear guidance as it relates to the prospects of public comment, what could be put on—should be put on our future comment cards for the public to be aware of. It also gives some clear direction of what the legal limits are as far as content-specific. It also gives us some ability to look at issues that are—have been evaluated by the court that deals with what—the lack of decorum, the lack of discipline in a public hearing. And so I think it addresses the kinds of things that we were concerned with. I think it's going to be certain parts of it are going to require interpretation. It is not a quote "black and white" issue. It still requires an assessment of what is viewed primarily as disruptive in this setting, as opposed to relying on a specific word or content, unless it becomes profane. And I think those are the kinds of things that, again, will be an issue of judgment and what can be restrained. I believe also in the hearing that came out was important that although in this government channel, we have not censored or gone back and redacted information, as we go through the franchise hearings, there is an ability to consider whether this would be viewed as public access or public forum, and where those kinds of limitations could be placed as we reevaluate the franchise. So that's something that would be pending. I think that in looking at 12A and B in the document, it gives us a great deal more tangible substance to give the clarity to not only the public when they come forward, but also each member to understand consistently what is an acceptable decorum. The one thing I would ask as we move forward is, number one, that we—by the time we get back to—from recess, if we can have the language available that's going to be placed on the community comment cards, so that could be implemented, that would be important. And I think the only other thing I'd ask as the chair and the president of the council, that we find that maybe that language would be sufficient to be used verbally before each comment section, just to remind the public of what we consider decorum in the chamber. And I think those are the two things I would add to the report, the request that we get that language. And the second one, that we might use that same language as an admonition before each public comment session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for getting this ball rolling. And I know this is something that has been of concern, and I've said very clearly to folks, I mean, the Los Angeles City Council in this place right here, these council chambers, are about as open a form of democracy outside of perhaps the Speaker's Corner in London, where anybody can say anything. It's the one protected place in England, that you can hear speech, and you can hear it repeatedly and without the limitations that most of our peer bodies have. And by limitations, I mean, I would point to the Board of Supervisors, our Community College District Board, our School Board, that talk about, you know, how you fill out your speaker cards, how many times you can speak on the same topic, how many times you can address the body in a given month. And so this is still—I would challenge anybody to find a place where there is a raw, more broad, more expansive, more robust place for public comment in a government body, you know, prescribed within those rules. We have some research that was done by our city attorney here about rules of decorum. And I want to say very clearly, too, that what came up before, there are certain words that some find offensive, racist words. Those are protected here for worse, but for better in the sense of First Amendment protections. Obviously, there are words that offend, there are words that confuse, there are words that anger. Those are protected in here. Like it or not, that's a beautiful part of the First Amendment, that we don't choose that content. There are certain ones, obviously, that are considered obscene, which are not protected and never have been, and that's the same throughout the United States of America. But I wanted to just point out so that people understand the context here of what some of the limitations are in cities around the state. And this was just a cursory kind of investigation in Berkeley. I mean, there's no city that probably prides itself as the home of free speech in California, certainly more than Berkeley does. And their council has a rule of decorum about no person shall disrupt the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Prohibited disruptive behavior includes, but is not limited to shouting, making disruptive noises such as boos or hisses, creating or participating in a physical disturbance, speaking out of turn, or in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting others from observing the meeting, which means standing and blocking people's ways. Beverly Hills, Burbank, Concord, Culver City, Dana Point, Danville, Fresno, Glendale, Long Beach. In Long Beach, it actually says that you have to address the presiding officer as Mr. Mayor or Madam Mayor. Los Alamos, Los Angeles County, Los Angeles Unified School District, Mountain View, Newport Beach, Norwalk, Oceanside, San Diego, San Francisco, San Jose, Santa Ana, Santa Cruz, Santa Monica, Torrance. You know, we had the Vice Mayor of San Jose in here the other day, colleagues, and we were talking to her. She said, you know, "We always take our general public comment at the end, because those folks who are coming for specific items, for their comment." They've been working in prescribed manner, working with council members or going to other hearings, and they have items that have reflected a lot of work leading up to that point, not just necessarily an entry point. And I think she made an excellent point. Today, all we're doing is adopting something which has been upheld in our courts, something which gives discretion, but does not mandate or expand beyond the First Amendment protections, but gives discretion to make sure that certain speech doesn't drown out other speech, it doesn't become disruptive to the people's business that we have to conduct. There are a couple of things, if I can ask the city attorney to come forward for a moment, that I think—actually, my constituent, Mr. McQuiston, pointed out—or you can—well, you can stay there. Sorry, Deion. On 12B, line 6, it says the presiding officer shall. And I think he makes a good point that we should probably amend that to the presiding[1793.28] that to the presiding officer may, in order to give that flexibility, instead of mandating that a presiding officer has to there. Also, in twelve A, line eighteen, it says, no person shall stand or sit in the aisles or along the walls. And it's a good point that we do have papers from the clerk that we have to get here to read the board, that requires some standing as well. So if we might be able to figure out a way that would address, when conducting some sort of official city business or interacting with either posted city notices or discussing things with city officials, we often say, can you please talk to a member of our staff at the CLA's office? And this would maybe prohibit that. Could that be looked at?
Yes, it could. Or it could be limited to the center aisle, keeping the center aisle clear.
Okay, why don't we say that for the center aisle for now, and we'll look at whether that should be amended any further. But that would allow people to have, of course, that interaction, consult with our staffs, ourselves, et cetera, as well. And the last one that was brought up, it said, no question may be asked of a member of the city council or city staff without permission of the presiding officer. Again, I think a question may be asked, but we are prescribed under the Brown Act of not being able to respond to that. So that may be something which we can give some discretion on. I'm actually comfortable with the way it is right now, but if the city attorney can look at that and see if there's a way of allowing that there be some procedural questions, if somebody said, can I have a copy of what was just given out, can I speak with somebody from the CLA's office? That should not require the permission of a presiding officer to do that as well. So if we can look at that to perhaps tweak that. But otherwise, you know, I think this gives, again, protection for speech, and that's the most important thing here. It's, on a scale of one to ten, we're a nine, and I know no other city that is, and certainly no other government body in the Los Angeles area, at least with the county, the school board, the school, Community College District, that does a better job. And our viewers on Channel thirty-five and those who come here know, we have sometimes people who speak on the same item for close to one hundred and fifty times in one year. And that's a part of democracy and something we don't intend to erode. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Madam President, is it possible for me to ask the ACLU to come up to the table?
I think what we will do, they're not staff, city staff...
To the podium, then?
If they have a speaker card, which they're correcting, when I get to public, the input or comment from the public, I would request that we do it then.
Because I like to ask your questions and stuff like that, different than a normal public comment.
To the podium? All right, that's fine. Do you know, the lady's name is Belinda Escobosa-Helsor?
Oh, great, 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 great.
If you can come to the lectern there.
Okay, I know you've been running the clock, so I wonder if you could just start it back up again. Okay. Hi, tell us your thoughts about this proposed ordinance.
Well, we do agree with...
Tell us your name first.
Sure, my name's Belinda Escobosa-Helsor. I'm a staff attorney at the ACLU of Southern California. And we do agree with the city attorney's analysis that requires that any rules of decorum be content neutral and targeted at behavior rather than pure speech. However, we are concerned that although the proposed rule may be facially valid, we're concerned that it may be applied in a content discriminatory fashion in the sense that speech is being targeted based on the content rather than the behavior of the speaker that may be disruptive.
So does that mean they can use the N-word, or the F-word, or any of those other kinds of words that many of us find apprehensible?
They can use, none of those words are, although they may be unpleasant to some listeners, they are not prohibited speech under the First Amendment. They're actually protected speech. And a speaker may say those words and only be punished if their conduct causes a disruption in the city council meeting. For instance, regulating, shouting, very loud speech, repetitive speech, speech that goes beyond the limited time period, but not what the person says or what words he or she chooses to say.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker, Mr....
Just a point of clarification from the city attorney. I know the N-word, the F-word was brought up, these are both, the N-word, I understand, was protected, is protected. The F-word is not, because there's obscenity. It's not just conduct, but there is an obscenity clause as well, that I think, somebody saying, F the draft, is protected, but if somebody uses obscenity in a sexual way or something that's directed, that that isn't protected.
That is true. That is one of the words that do not have the same First Amendment protection as the other words that have been mentioned.
Thank you.
And again, I think that we do need to take into consideration the Supreme Court's ruling with regards to F the draft, which was protected, a protective expression, especially in an open and public city council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we go to our next speaker, Mr. Parks has a short introduction.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just like to introduce my assemblywoman from the Forty-seventh District, founder of the Community Coalition, Karen Bass, is here with us today.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Zein.
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney regarding the cards that the speaker still out, calls for their name, address, et cetera. It's a public forum, the name identification. I know we don't ask for identification, but does a name have to be, or should it be their actual name, or could they use any name that they wish?
As long as the name, whatever word they put on, it could be Prince's sign that they put on there, as long as the council president or President Protam can state some sort of name to identify the speaker as coming up as being next in order to speak, that's all that's required. So we cannot cross-examine the speaker as to what his true name is.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying for the speaker that's filling out the card to give their true identity.
I don't believe that would be permissible. As long as there's some identifying moniker or characteristic or designation, the sole purpose of the speaker cards, really, is to assist in the orderly process of the meeting, and it's to call the next person in order to speak. There is the right of anonymous attendance of these meetings. It's arguable whether they're putting their name on a speaker card is required, but out of the abundance of caution, the council should not be requesting or requiring them to swear that that's their true name.
And even though it's a government process where you're making statements which could be attributed to an individual that is not the individual speaking, what about that issue?
If, if, I'm not sure.
Well, for example, if someone comes up and says they're John Smith, and they're not John Smith, and they're making statements, maybe positive, negative, derogatory, and then, John Smith, I didn't make that statement, I wasn't there, what about that issue? I know we talk about identity theft in the real world, I'm not talking about identity theft, I'm talking about assuming the identity of someone, not yourself.
Again, I don't think that's the role of the council itself to cross-examine what his true name is.
I'm not saying cross-examine, I'm saying, given identity, because you're making statements in public, on television, and the statements you make, for example, you come up and say you're George Bush, and you're making some statements, may be derogatory statements, and then there's media that covers it, and George Bush said this, or George Bush said that, and you're not George Bush.
Yeah, I think whatever he says and whatever name he or she gives, the recipient of that information will have to weigh its validity. So whether he or she gives his correct name, he or she still has a right to say certain things.
I understand that, and I'm just talking about the identity of the individual, not the issue of the statements they make. But the fact is, they're making public statements in a public forum in a governmental body. Any requirement, any worship or form, would you have to give your true identity, and then make whatever statements you want, but the true identity.
Yeah, based on my research and looking at the California City Attorney's listserv, the consensus is that there's no requirement that they give their actual name. Now, regarding entry into public buildings, that's another requirement. I don't know what the requirement is at the metal detector, but regarding entry into public buildings, there may be, and there probably should be, a requirement that someone gives their proper identification.
To show proper identification at the time of entry into the public building.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Our next speaker is Mr. Garcetti.
I have my question answered, thank you.
Okay, all right, there are no further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll. Public comment has already been held, thank you very much. Excuse me, please, please hold your voice.
I would advise, since the public comment was reopened for the ACLU attorney, that there should be a limited public comment allowed for these individuals.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion that we open up public comment on this. Mr. Garcetti seconded.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have to vote on this motion?
It could be without objection.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
And, Mr. President, if you have a recommendation as to how long the public comment should be?
How many cards do we have? Six, ten minutes total? So, folks, it'd be about two minutes? That'd be good. Okay, thanks.
We will reopen public comment, not to exceed ten minutes, and give each speaker no more than two minutes each. First speaker will be Joyce Dillard. First speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you very much. Nice to be back on the record. I think we should have a copy of the Brown Act hanging up in City Hall, down at the front. You know, I mean, a sign-in actually is not required by the Brown Act. Not required. That's in the Brown Act. They put the word "not" required. It's like clean money, not required, okay? The Constitution, you know, this is the guts of our whole civil lawsuit, because we're seeing this constitutional violation happening all over the beach. But I have it here, you know, I can quote you the law, it's beyond dispute. The First Amendment protects mere verbal abuse of public officials, and any action to punish or deter such speech is categorically prohibited by the Constitution, and that's Duran versus City of Douglas, nine oh four, F two D, thirteen seventy-two, Ninth Circuit Court, nineteen ninety. They go on to say that the freedom of individuals verbally to oppose or challenge police action without thereby risking penalties is one of the principal characteristics by which we distinguish a free nation from a police state. And if you ask anyone at Venice Beach, or anyone I talk to, they say that California's turning into a police state, in Los Angeles particularly. And I'm down there on the beach, and I'm just trying to make a complaint to the police, a complaint, and they're like, oh, sir, they're talking like you're the criminal. Some guy letting off a firework right by a dog when the World Cup was on. You know, to me, that's not on, and the police are there, you know, they're, I don't even want to get into that. So, and there's another Supreme Court ruling consistently held that the fact that...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Samuel Sanchez. Next speaker is Samuel Sanchez.
Okay, your time is, your two minutes has been used. Next speaker will be Samuel Sanchez.
Okay, first, for there to even have been called, to try to do a vote on this without hearing public comment is ridiculous. Me and my friends had cards in this on Friday, it was moved to Tuesday, and now you're trying to vote on it without hearing anything. And it says that public comment's already been heard. It's ridiculous. One of the things in the rules says, shall not make any personal or unduly repetitive things. Well, if our council people don't have public hearings and town hall meetings, like Mr. Rosendahl was kind enough to do, how are we supposed to address them? This is the forum where we address them. If they don't come to their public meetings, if they don't come to the parks, where are we supposed to get in touch with them? They don't return our calls, they don't do anything. There's no correspondence whatsoever. And their affiliate groups, such as Concerned Citizens, for example, don't help the situation at all either. And as far as unduly repetitive in the language there, I mean, the farmers have been coming here for three years, we just want to get our point across. If you ignore us, if half of you are talking and having side conversations, if you say you have a full quorum, but I only see six people, of course I'm going to repeat myself. Of course I'm going to repeat myself. You know? Another thing is no standing or sitting in the aisles. I mean, unless you're a councilperson or someone with more money, I mean, what's next, the dress code? Do I, I can't wear these? I can't wear waraches? I have to write neater on my public comment card? I mean, where does this end? I mean, no loud comments? Is Mr. City Attorney going to have a decibel meter? How is this going to work? Are you going to, okay, you're above, you know, eight, you can't, no, no, okay. I mean, who's going to enforce this? You know? This is ridiculous to try to limit, you guys don't even listen, and you expect to further cut down public comment. Give us twenty seconds, then.
Thank you very much.
I'll get it out.
Okay, thank you very much. There are no further speakers, no further speaker cards, no more speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll? There are no more speaker cards in the box on this item. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll, please.
If folks want to speak, still within this ten minutes, we can...
I have, I have cards on item fifty-five, not on this item. Shall I take the cards on fifty-five?
Yeah, why don't we take them together, if that's all right, Madam President?
All right, that's fine. Okay. Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Mr. Michael Hunt.
Yeah, look what they're trying to do, people. Everybody watching on TV, we got a citizens' alert right here, because first of all, they weren't even going to open cards in the first place. They were just going to open the roll and steamroll the roll like they always do. So I had to get up and be out of order. First of all, I was out of order to even get them to take my attention. Then luckily, President Garcetti, a very fair and balanced individual, said, all right, we're going to do it anyway. And then the person who made the complaint said, you don't have the card. I was here the first one. Here's the problem with this thing. It's too subjective. First of all, I see no evidence that there's even need for a code of conduct. I see no evidence of that. It's too subjective. When you put words like loud, where's the decibel meter? Because that's subjective. You know, what's too loud? Things like unduly repetition, boisterous conduct, I want to be boisterous, language, whistling, all these things. You got subjectivity. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, Gene Simmons mask. You say I can't wear a Gene Simmons mask, I say you can. Show me where I can't. That's subjectivity. I was speaking on Friday, and Councilmember Gruel cut me off. Guess why? I said, transfer of funds, can I ask you a question, please? And she said, you're out of order. I had to go watch the tape ten times. I called the city attorney's office, and he said, you said the F-word, which although I am allowed to say, I'm not going to say it, because all I need to say is the F-word, and that makes the emphasis enough. Ms. Gruel cut me off for saying, transfer of funds, can I ask you a question? She said, I said the F-word. I had to watch the tape ten times to even figure out what she was talking about. That's subjectivity. Plus, I should have gotten a warning, she cut me off altogether. So there's just too many things that are way too subjective. If I'm too loud, President Garcetti, do I still get to sing like Journey and the Bee Gees? I mean, what's too loud, you know? No standing up, could I still get to dance like Justin Timberlake? So right now, before I can't do it anymore, I'm going to sing the last song I might be able to sing, y'all. Don't stop believing. Hold on to that feeling, street light.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker will be Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd is the next speaker, followed by Jim McQuiston.
Yes, yes, we back on the record. I think I'm the one that caused all the controversy...
I think I'm the one that caused all the controversy in this council with using the word "nigger."
Okay, Matt Dowd was the next speaker. Is Mr. Dowd still here?
Madam President, the speaker should be given a warning not to use that word and then allowed to continue.
Let's get Mr. Dowd up here, and then would you like to give him the warning then? What's the language? Matt Dowd was the next speaker.
Yield my time to Michael Hunt?
No, actually, we're not ceding time. If you do not wish to speak, I'll put your card aside, and then after that, the next speaker will be Mr. Jim McQuiston. Mr. McQuiston.
Wow. Whoa, 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 what's going on here? I don't- Okay, can you hold my card, please?
Mr. City Attorney, would you please give the warning?
Okay. Is the clock stopped?
Mr. City Attorney, if you'd give the warning for the record to the individuals in the audience who are out of order.
During a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, there's a need for civility and expedition in the carrying out of public business. When addressing the city council, please direct your remarks to the council as a whole and refrain from personal, impertinent, abusive, or profane remarks.
Mr. Garcetti.
To clarify, I asked that we, this was my motion to reopen. We have had public hearings on this, which is, and that happens many times, but given the nature, I reopened it because it seemed fitting. We're taking 55 and 56 together, so per my motion of 10 minutes, where I believe over 10, but I'll go a few more minutes. Is this the total that we're at right now? We have 4 minutes 26 seconds left? Is that correct? I would say that anybody who's spoken on either 55 or 56, since we're taking this together, that they speak once, to allow other people like Mr. McQuiston, who's waiting, to have his free speech rights also protected. He has not spoken, so Mr. Dowd, I know you spoke on 55, so on 56, if you would allow Mr. McQuiston to speak next, that would be most appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. McQuiston. Mr. McQuiston will be followed by Daniel Santana.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, for making the corrections. That's all that I requested. I think you all have my statement, and that's all I need to say right now.
Mr. Santana, you're our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council. I'm outraged over the proposed actions of Councilmember Jan Perry for implementing the rules that will maintain the quote-unquote "civility and expedition in carrying out the public business in order to ensure that the public has full opportunity to be heard." Wait, listen, Jan Perry, because I know you're not listening, but the statement within itself is a contradiction from all the times I spent here at the City Council. The time for public comment was reduced from three minutes-
As a point of clarification, just for the record, since the record is important, we'll give you your time back, Miss Perry was listening. For anybody who was watching us at home, I just want to correct the record because that was put out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Please proceed.
What's next? 10 seconds? I wouldn't be surprised. If there's anyone who needs rules here, it's the City Council. It is unjust to have time for public comment to continue while people are walking up to the podium to deliver their speeches. It is also unjust that the City Council interrupts individuals during their speech and while doing so continue the time they're going. Then there's another line that states persons addressing the City Council should not make personal, impertinent, et cetera, et cetera, profane remarks to the council or any member of the council. Well, what is it that you expect for people to, so they could listen to you, Miss Perry? We have the right to call out unjust council members. Isn't it not part of the City Council's obligation to listen to their people? Everyone sitting here is who you're responsible for listening to. In order to be a good leader, you need to know what it is that you are doing wrong. That is what we are here for, to criticize you so you could become better leaders. And what you're trying to restrict is, you're trying to restrict even more our quote-unquote "freedom of speech," right? I asked of all of you to just make the right decision and do not implement this unjust order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further cards in the speaker box. Mr. Michael Hunt can come back up now and speak.
Yes, and this is the very same thing that we're talking about, the words that are being used here and that our liberty is being taken. I think the 11th District already have one lawsuit, one major lawsuit. I'm hoping that you guys vote yes on it, so you guys can have two major lawsuits in the United States District Court, because it's actually illegal what you guys are doing. I think that the only way you guys learn is by lawsuits and things like that. We try to work with you guys, but certain words are in the dictionary, should be used here, and I think that's how this all came about. I don't think if you're not directing the word to any one individual and just using it as a sentence, as you've seen, it was one of LA Times' bestseller. At this time, I would like to yield my time to the ACLU lady.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick comment with regards to what happened here. It highlights the point that I was trying to make when I was asked by the council member certain questions. I think there's some confusion in the application of this rule, although it's proposed as a White versus Norwalk, which was upheld to be okay, but the only reason it was upheld to be okay under the First Amendment was because it could be narrowly construed to reach only behavior and not speech. The way that this rule was just applied with this gentleman here was to reach his speech because he said the N-word, and that, for everybody in this room, is unconstitutional, and that is exactly what my point is here. It's not only valid, not only has to be facially valid, it has to be applied in a content-neutral manner, and the application here, as it was just displayed, is unconstitutional, madam.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Hunt was given a warning regarding his language and his conduct, and he was allowed to speak again, so as applied, council acted within constitutional limits.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
I have a question regarding the warning to an individual. Individual makes those statements that provoke, that incite, is given a warning, and they come back on another matter, and they come back on another matter. How many warnings do they receive in one day? Or do they receive a warning for each time they come up and speak on an individual item that's agendaized?
Pursuant to the rule as drafted, if an individual is given a warning, he or she will have an opportunity to speak again on the same, well, on any other matter, and if that person disrupts the meeting again, then he will be ordered to leave the room. If he doesn't leave the room, then the council president could order the sergeant-at-arms to remove that person from the room.
So, if an individual wants to speak on five items, and on the first item, they make a comment, and they're warned, any subsequent comments on the other four items, they would be removed.
That's up to the council president's discretion.
And we do this day after day. In other words, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, they come here, they made these comments, so we just go, the merry-go-round keeps going round and round. It's the same individual, the same comment made over and over and over to incite, and we keep repeating this every time we have a meeting with the same individual. In other words, you're given a warning, told not to do it, you do it again, that's it. But we're not saying that.
There are other jurisdictions that have penalties written into the rules. Rather than go that route, if somebody continuously and continually is removed from council chambers, our office, upon request by the council, could initiate some sort of injunctive relief or some legal action to keep the person away, but so that we could make, but we would have to make a finding, a factual finding in court to do that.
The reason I mention this is that this is broadcast over cable television, and there are many people in the City of Los Angeles that watch this, amongst them children. And I've had complaints presented to me about the comments, the words that are stated by some of the speakers. These people are getting offended by it, wondering why we don't do anything about it. So, there's a concern from the public that have children. Not often do we have children in the council, on occasion we do, but I've been contacted by parents who are upset that their children be exposed to this. You don't hear this on commercial television. Cable television's a whole different ballgame, but the City of Los Angeles official television station, we don't seem to have any guidelines and regulations because of the people who are viewing, including young children.
Well, the first step is the warning, which would alert the media or the viewing public that the City Council's not sanctioning that language. And then the next step would be, if it's continued, then that person could be removed. Now, regarding the cable broadcast, there are a few more steps that need to be taken regarding the cable franchising rules. As it stands right now, it is, as written, it is considered to be a public forum, and there have to be some alterations to that, that our office and the, and ITA can work together as to what sort of standards we could use later on down the line.
Because I think the envelope's been pushed over the edge, where viewers, general public, is obviously not too pleased with it, especially the young children. I know that Councilmember Gruel's young child oftentimes watches this, and a youngster shouldn't be exposed to that type of language, and we try to keep our children away from that. And here, it's a governmental body, and those words, and there's no beep, there's no blackout that we would have. So, I just think something should be done in that arena to provide the proper environment, free speech, public access, but still, some of the parents are getting concerned about the repeated comments, specific words that are uttered here in City Council and broadcast over the radio waves, transmission waves.
That is something that our office could explore further with ITA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti is our next speaker.
No, I'm good. I have my stuff answered.
All right, thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 14, 9. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 57 was called special for cards from the public, and there is a substitute motion. It has been circulated with new ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a presentation from Mr. Huizar?
If I could invite the Chair, one of the co-chairs of the Joint Presidents' Commission on School Governance, Maria Casillas. Our other co-chair, David Cunningham, could not be with us today. And Maria, if you could sit up here, thank you very much.
That's okay.
I wanted to just refresh everyone's memory that, and I think Maria will cover this and tell us a little bit about the commission, but as you recall, when I was school board president and Alex Padilla was president of the council, we created the Joint Presidents' Commission on School Governance in order to examine whether we can have a better governance structure at LAUSD to continue to improve and raise student achievement. We created a 30-member commission that has been going over these items for the past year, has heard from a number of experts, and from a number of former school board members, and a number of other folks. And so, at this time, if I could just ask the co-chair, Maria Casillas, if you could go over the commission, what you guys did, and also mention to us, or briefly mention your recommendations. And what we see before us today is an item to place before voters in November, three changes. One is to create some finance reforms, because in fact, I've called what we have at the school district today, the Wild West. There really is no rules and regulations, just the bare minimum in terms of what's required by the state. So, we'll set primarily a contribution of $1,000 per school board candidate, amongst some other finance reforms. Second, it will create term limits, three, four-year terms, and finally, it will create a compensation review committee to examine how much school board members should be paid. These three items that are before us today to place on the ballot for November are those items, and that were part of the recommendations of the commission's report, that can be changed through charter. There are a number of other recommendations, such as decentralization, creating a cluster system, but those are actually items that can be changed by the school district itself. So, the ones we see as before us today are those that can be changed by the LA City Charter. So, thank you for being here, Maria Casillas, and before I turn it over to you, I just want to thank you for the time and energy and effort you put into this, a number of meetings you went through this past year, and I think the, when I went to the first meeting and the last meeting, the energy level, the focus was just the same, and so you and David Cunningham certainly kept this group together, and I want to thank you for that, and thank you again for being here today. So, Maria, if you could just share with us briefly about the commission and some of its recommendations. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Huizar, and thank you, members of the council, for taking time to listen briefly to what I have to say concerning the relevancy of our recommendations and your action here today. I must state that our recommendations were actually a total of 54, and as Mr. Huizar explained, there are two or three of them, I think, which fit well with your discussion today. First, let me say that my co-chair, David Cunningham, is unable to be here because he had a scheduling conflict, or else he would be here with me. We're here to support the action before you to place, before the voters in November, the question of whether to institute campaign finance reform, term limits, and a compensation review committee for the LAUSD Board of Education. I want you to know that the commission was created by you a year ago, and we met monthly, sometimes every week. Every other week was our regular schedule, but from about April, we met every single week so that we could continue understanding the issue before us. We also had a series of 25 public, of about 17 public hearings where the public was able to speak, and about 1,000 persons came before us to speak to the issue of school governance. I must tell you, there is a lot of confusion out there about school governance. In some cases, people did not know whether we were, the commission was the Board of Education, or whether we were the City Council, or just exactly who we were. So, there needs to be much education about the whole issue about governance. But first, I want to share with you then what these three recommendations would be coming from the commission, and to let you know that we will be back at another time to share our full report, however it is, on the website, on your website, and if you'd like to look at the full range of recommendations, I would encourage you to do so. First, the school board, in terms of the recommendation specifically, is first that the school board election campaign should have the same rules, regulations, and controls as the Los Angeles City Council members' elections. The commission believed contribution limits, along with greater disclosure and enforcement, increase the competitiveness and transparency of school board campaigns, and would ensure that school board candidates are on the same playing field as other elected officials. Second, each school board member should be limited to serving three, four-year terms. We felt that term limits ensure fresh candidates and ideas, but allow members time to develop strategic initiatives. Finally, compensation for board members should be increased. As you know, board members currently earn $25,200, and the commission overwhelmingly felt that appropriate compensation would attract the best candidates and would allow members to devote the time needed to respond to constituents and grapple with complex policy questions. So, in conclusion, I simply want to thank Councilman Huizar and Padilla for their vision in caring, in creating the commission, and for their leadership in carrying forward our recommendation to the voters of the City of Los Angeles. And I would urge you to act quickly on this, as you know that the debate, the conversation about what is happening to our public education system is a very heated debate at the moment, and the interest of the public is on this issue, and so it would be very appropriate for you to take action quickly on this issue and not postpone it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And, you know, this is, as you heard, been a long, drawn-out process, and we've gone to a point in this city, in the school district, where everyone's talking about what to do at LAUSD and how to reform it. When we created this commission, Alex Padilla and I realized that this would be the first comprehensive evaluation of LAUSD in its over 100-year history. And with all the attention being played right now, or paid right now, to the school district and to reforming the governance structure that we have there right now, I- and to reforming the governance structure that we have there right now, I think it's an appropriate time for us to go forward and put this on the ballot in November while the timing is hot, while the iron is hot, while people are talking about focused on it. And as we all know, not only as council members, but the public, our attention span, you know, jumps from topic to topic. And right now, while we have the attention of the public on reforming the school district, it would be the appropriate time to put this on the ballot for November. I do want to go over rather quickly, if the Chair, the President allows me to, the amendments we've put forward.
You've got three more minutes, so don't worry, you've got six minutes. So go ahead.
Great, thank you. The amendments we've put forward today, two of the first amendments are actually technical in nature, just rewording the title of the actual ordinance and the summary of the ordinance. It's changing the placement of words, nothing really major. What we have added today that's different from what we saw when we first put this motion forward today is a compensation review committee. As you recall, we had talked about raising board member salaries, because that is what the commission had recommended. We put forward $40,000, other council members put $90,000. Councilmember Weston gave us a very good idea to create a compensation review committee, which will more in-depthly examine the responsibilities of school board members and see what they should be paid. I thought it was a great idea, because as we all know, the mayor has his proposed legislation in Sacramento that will be voted upon at the end of August. That may change the responsibilities of school board members. The proposed legislation by the mayor diminishes the role of board members. So we do have a Board of Education in the future that will have diminished roles. The review committee can at that time, or will, examine those new roles and give a more appropriate compensation. The compensation review committee, initially, we thought we could leave open and create it, and what's it going to look like after the voters decide upon this and hopefully vote a yes. However, we were advised by the city attorney's office that we actually had to put in the ordinance what and who these commission members will be. We modeled this compensation committee after what was created in 1980 by a compensation review committee for the state legislature. So we are proposing seven, a seven-member compensation review committee, two appointed by the president of the Los Angeles City Council, two appointed by the mayor of the City of Los Angeles, one appointed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, one appointed by the mayors of Bell, Cudahy, Huntington Park, Maywood, and Southgate, so those cities all appoint one, and one appointed by the mayors of Gardena, Carson, Lomita, Monterey Park, San Fernando, and West Hollywood. Those mayors would appoint one. Leaves a total of seven appointments to this compensation review committee. Now, we are also asking that the compensation review committee be composed of certain characteristics. So these appointments will include two parents, two union members, an executive of a large corporation or CEO, a small business owner, and also a person who has experience with compensation and similar backgrounds, such as an economist, market researcher, or personnel manager. Those are the amendments before us today, technical in nature, except, with the exception of the compensation review committee. Finally, I want to end by saying, you know, of all the talk we've heard about governance, there are some people who say that governance is not focused on what's important, what's happening at the school site, what's happening in the classroom. This is only going to change who's in charge. But the reality is that having served for four and a half years on the school board, let me tell you very clearly, there is little, if no accountability at the school board as we see it today. We need to jump on what we're seeing with the attention that we have with the mayor and others who are forcing more accountability at the school district, and take this to the voters so that they decide whether we want to have more transparency as to what and how school board members get to the school board, what and how long they will be there, and finally, to create the compensation review committee so that we are able to more adequately create the type of board members that will pay more attention to their huge responsibilities of overseeing an $11 billion budget each and every year. Thank you very much, and other, would you want to add anything right now, Ms. Casillas?
No, I think you've summarized it very well. Thank you, Mr. Huizar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Mr. Weston and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to, obviously, a lot of hard work has gone into this. I'd like to thank the commission and thank Mr. Huizar for what he's done. And I tell you, it's real difficult to rise to say that I have serious issues with what it is that you're trying to do. We've got a mayor who is in discussions right now, trying to take some form of control over the school board. In my opinion, this is premature. I think that you, this should be vetted some more. I disagree with the fact that the attention is going to go away from the school system, because it's not. If the mayor is successful, what's going to occur is whatever he's successful with will begin to take place in January. The attention will refocus. In fact, the attention on the schools will not go away. And I think at that point in time, it would be better, because we would know specifically what the rule of the school board is at that point in time. At this juncture, it's up in the air. And then I also have concerns, you know, I don't like to do things that aren't necessary. Let me, if I, if I may, the average school board member since 1987, the average, Mr. Huizar, the average school board member has served 6.5 years. 6.5 years. I can't remember the last time that a school board member in my district was re-elected. The last two served one term. I can quickly go over, you were there five years, Janethia Hayes was there four, Capri Young four, Valerie Fields four, Victoria Castro did 12, George Kiriyama did four, then Horton did eight, Boudreau did eight, Goldberg did eight, Fieratani did eight. Do we need to do this right now? Is this properly vetted? Should we not wait to see what's going to happen with the mayor's plan? Maybe, maybe after more discussion, we could place this on a future ballot. And at least, that might elevate my comfort level, because at least, I would know that we would have more time to vet it. But I will say this, philosophically, we, in my opinion, we've always had term limits. It's called vote his or her butt out of office. And I don't know if I'm prepared to impose that on a group of people that work so hard with really no compensation. So I ask the members of this council to think, to pump the brakes, and to ask themselves, is the timing right for this issue? I say, in my 27 years of experience in this business, that this is not fully cooked yet.
Next speaker is Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I am one of those that believes we need major reform in the school district. I can point to a number of levels that I personally have been frustrated as a parent, I've personally been frustrated as an elected official, worked, trying to work with this school board on a number of things, from programs in the schools to where they cite their new schools, and have come up against a brick wall almost in every case. I'll tell you what I'm frustrated about, members, and whether or not this is a good idea or not, is not really what I'm going to speak on. What I'm frustrated about is that we did have a president's commission on the reform of school governance, led by Alex Padilla and Jose Huizar. Each one of us had a commissioner that we appointed to this commission. I personally attended a couple of the commission meetings, I testified on some issues that were important to me. But I will tell you, I'm a little bit upset that that full report never came back to this body, and certainly never came back to my education and neighborhood committee. According to a summary that I'm reading of that report, it includes 54 recommendations. And it says, and I think this is important, "Taken together, the commission believes that if implemented together, these recommendations will improve the governance of the district, lead to higher student achievement, greater parental engagement, improve school and student safety, and accountability for results." And I think what we might be doing today is rushing a few of the recommendations to the ballot. I believe a lot of these recommendations deserve to be voted on by the parents who live in the LAUSD school district. So my only problem with taking a few of these recommendations and putting them on this November ballot is I think we're shortchanging ourselves. I think we keep this debate alive about school reform. I think beyond the mayor's plan and what happens in Sacramento, there are other issues that I think we can keep alive. And I think once this report, our commissioners that we appointed, come back and tell us all of the recommendations that they would like to see implemented, many of which will have to be charter changes, then I think we have a better idea of presenting a full package to the voters at a later date that has been totally vetted. And I got to be honest, our education neighborhood committee was formed to deal with issues in the school district, and I think this shortchanges what I think is the, probably the last time in the history of this city that we actually have a debate about school reform. And I think the commission that you two established was visionary, it was thoughtful, but we have not heard what all their recommendations are, and we have not been able to give a package to the voters, which I think, along with the mayor's plan, will increase everything from student achievement to accountability. So I would just ask that we wait till we have all the recommendations before us, my committee gets to look at it, and then we present that to the voters. Thank you.
We have Mr. Reyes, Mr. Padilla, and Ms. Rosendahl as our next three speakers. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I rise because I hear the passion, I hear the need in Councilor Huizar's presentation and how we must address the needs of our kids. But I also know that earlier this year, we had a production called Blowout, Walkout. And Walkout, we talked about the conditions of our schools back in the '60s and '70s. And when you looked at the conditions of our schools today, not much has changed. So the need is there and is very real. It is about our kids. So I listened attentively to Councilor Weston and his assessment. Now I'm hearing for the first time that Councilor Hahn never had the opportunity, as Chair of that committee, to give the respect to our commissioners, who put so much work in that process, to actually go through that discussion. What does that do? It allows the mayor to continue to build his strength, his partnerships, it gives the school district, the board members, to attend this committee, to let them voice their opinion, their voice. They have yet to give, to be given that opportunity, because everyone is talking about their role. We have a newly elected board member that represents my area, which took over Councilor Huizar's seat. What is her opinion on that? We've got brand-new schools being built. What is the system doing? How's it being changed? The committee will allow us to go there. So I just think the stakes are too high. And I want to support my colleague, Councilor Huizar, in his effort, but I think it's a timing issue. Then we have these other discussions that are dealing with other realms of concern about the role of the politician, the role of clean money, and I don't want to have our quality of life be compromised for our kids' sake because of all of these other political issues. They deserve that focus. And it is with that intent that I would hope we can move this forward to another time and follow, follow Councilor Weston's advice, and being much more focused on this very, very important issue.
Mr. Padilla, and then Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll speak once, relatively briefly now, and then probably push my button again for later on in the debate, but just to clarify a couple of questions. One is from Ms. Hahn, who asked, so we have this commission, great process, credit here, you know, where's our final product? My understanding is the final report with all the recommendations that you referenced just got back from the printer either end of yesterday or early this morning, it's in the process of being distributed, and per the resolution that created the commission, will be formally transmitted to everybody around this horseshoe, to this body, this city council, as well as the mayor, as well as the legislature, as well as the Board of Education. So it is going to be a widely distributed document with much more background and details on the recommendations that we've already begun to hear about and read about. Second, just an observation, because Ms. Hahn and others have asked, you know, if this commission really went through this process comprehensively and has thoughtful recommendations, then we ought to wait to hear from them and their final product. Well, just a few minutes ago, we had one of the two co-chairs of the commission, I believe, Mr. Huizar, speaking on behalf of the commission, and speaking in favor of the item that is currently before us. So I think that box is checked, that I is dotted, that T is crossed. And last, again, just for now, Mr. Reyes, I couldn't agree with you more, timing is everything. And I believe the time is now. Now is when the entire civic dialogue in Los Angeles is focused on education. So come this November, I think education will still be very much first and foremost on the forefront of people's thoughts and deliberations, and we'll have voters going to the polls, paying much more attention than ever on the future of public schools in Los Angeles. Come next March, maybe that'll remain the case, maybe not, we don't know. But we do know that this November, people are engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that in looking at this issue of schools, certainly, it's of great interest to me, because I'm one of the few, I believe, in the City of Los Angeles, who represents in the council, that not one of my schools is a citywide average on its API scores. We also have an issue in that maybe the only school in our memory that's on probation that lost their certification. And we also know that we're representing a district that certainly fulfills a high percentage of the number of people that go through the criminal justice system. So with all of that said, the schools are of fundamental importance to me. My concern is, is that we have tried to fix the school system over time in somewhat of a piecemeal manner, and we've not, in my judgment, seen the end results. It's pretty clear on most of the research that smaller classes, better teachers, certified teachers, those are the things that are necessary to occur if we expect education to come about in our communities. I'm concerned that in November, in addition to our variety of infrastructure bonds and billions, literally billions of dollars are going to be voted on, the issues that that ballot is going to be somewhat clouded and somewhat in the sense of diverting people's attention, that we, as Mrs. Hahn said earlier, should be looking at a collective approach to dealing with the schools, looking at all 54 of those recommendations, figuring out over the next several months what we should be doing with those recommendations, how we should implement them, how do they serve the larger 4 million people in the city and their children, so that we can have the best approach. The one criticism that I hear most in the public about what we do for a living is that we seem to pick a issue, we seem to pick something piecemeal, we get something and ride a particular item, but we don't look at things as comprehensively as we should. We've also complained that the prospects of term limits is one of the reasons, that everybody comes in, wants to get their 1/15th leave before their next election. So we do need to look at something comprehensive, put it in place, and then we can sell that to the public to say, here is a comprehensive view of how schools should be dealt with in the City of Los Angeles. I think it was an eye-opener to many, particularly myself, that many people weren't aware that the city charter actually governs the governance of our school district. And it's something that, with that education and how we can use the power of the charter, we can then begin to make an impact, as opposed to looking at the school district as a foreign object that says, why don't they do a better job for our kids? These are the same kids that we administer to throughout the City of LA with all the other programs that we have available. So I would think it's a timing issue. The timing, in my judgment, should be a more comprehensive plan, possibly for March, versus a clouded agenda in November, which may get lost in all of the rhetoric. versus a clouded agenda in November, which may get lost in all of the rhetoric of infrastructure and a variety of other things.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Am I the last speaker, Mr. President?
No, Mr. Rosendahl is after.
Okay, I could be the last speaker, that’s fine.
Both have requested to, I think Mr. Rosendahl wanted to hear comments, but Mr. Rosendahl could go either way.
You’d get it first before I...
Do you want to then speak after that as well to conclude?
Sure. I could do that.
Okay.
You know, I’ve heard here that we need a comprehensive review, that the timing is not right. But two things. When Alex Padilla and I started this commission, we committed to those commissioners, if you put your time into this, we assure you, this is not going to be something we put up on the shelf. And we’re concerned, and I’m concerned, that this will be something we do put up on the shelf. We committed to them that if you spend the hours and hours and hours reviewing testimony, hearing testimony, we’re going to act upon your recommendations. So when their recommendations came on, we scanned all the recommendations and said, these are the three that could be voted upon by charter, the others are the school district. But they did provide the comprehensive review. We also, and I assure you, knowing the school district and how it functions right now, I don’t think any of those recommendations are actually going to be implemented, the ones that the school district can. What we’re trying to do here is to say, commissioners, thank you for your comprehensive review, we’re acting upon those recommendations in a timely fashion. Now, the other question has to come up, why now, why not March? Again, I want to stress the timing of the city’s attention on these reforms. We should not lose sight of the fact that everyone’s attention is on this. In March, the attention, I believe, will not be as focused, will not be as informed, and we will not have the momentum going into that that we do have now. I don’t think that anything we do today in November will affect the legislation or will contradict any of the legislation that’s happening in Sacramento, because in fact, the mayor’s legislation does not talk about the school board and how the school board gets there, what regulations they should fall upon, and what they should be paid. It’s totally separate from what the mayor is doing. I did not hear one reason today why March makes more sense than November. But I do know this, I do know that moving anything at the school district is very difficult to do. Moving anything, this large bureaucracy, moving anything there is very difficult to do. We should seize upon this timing and make sure it happens now. In March, I believe, when all the mayor and what he brings to the table in terms of attention, because you know what, a lot of what the mayor is saying has been said for years, but finally, people are paying attention to him, because he is the mayor, and people are moving in that direction. Once that limelight is no longer there, I’m afraid we’re not going to have these changes to talk about what the school board members should be following in terms of finance and ethics reforms at the school district.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to hear from my colleague, Jose Weisar, because I felt that Herb Weston made a very persuasive discussion, which kind of threw me back a bit. But I want to tell you where I come out on this. I’ve been standing next to the mayor every time he gets off of a plane and talks about what he’s done up in Sacramento. And the reason I’ve been standing next to the mayor is the school system is broken. How it got broken, who’s responsible, and all of that, the commission got involved in. But the fact that 50% of the kids don’t graduate, and they can’t make it in this changing world we’re in, is a serious issue. So with the mayor’s energy saying, we have to fix it, it’s broken, I want to provide some leadership, I want to put myself out on the line, I want to take the heat, we got to do something, I’m standing next to them. I don’t know the details, and I’m not going to get caught in the details, but at that moment, I got to believe my mayor will do a better job with the present situation. Certainly can’t do a worse job than what we’ve done. And I’m not knocking the guy who runs it now, nor the school board, because frankly, I have had, on my television show, when I did all the election specials around the school board, the outrageousness that we pay them 24 grand, and we expect them to manage $11 billion projects, and they don’t have staff, they have nothing, and they sit there, seven of them, through long agendas this big, and they try to do the best they can. So frankly, we need to change the dynamic of how we govern our schools. And if legislation comes out of Sacramento that tightens up one thing, adds to another, then that’s more to look at and more to discuss. But I want to stand with Jose Weisar for two reasons. One, he was president of the school board, and I candidly want to say that I defer to his knowledge and understanding of the intricacies of that school board, and that’s the first big reason. And the second big reason, frankly, is what he’s asking for is charter reform, it can be part of the discussion in November, and it can continue to be other issues on the ballot as time goes on, as we go forward with this whole school thing. But let’s give it a chance, let’s support the former president of the school board, and let’s vote yes, I’m putting this on the November ballot. Thank you.
Labange is our next speaker. Mr. Labange.
Members, I have a son who goes to L.A. Unified. I also have a graduate, as you know, from John Marshall. Also so proud that the new Hall of Fame museum in Sacramento has a graduate from John Marshall High, Dr. David Ho, who helped develop the medicines to deal with AIDS, one of the first 13 Californians from my high school, L.A. Public Schools. I appreciate all that, I had to put that out there. I also appreciate what Mr. Padilla, Mr. Weisar has done, but I also think it’s going to be a long track me in this effort to try to reform our schools. And I think it would be better that we let this discussion, because I have a weird thought that at the end of the day, and I do believe Roy Romer has done an absolutely Mulholland-like job in building schools in this district, which hadn’t been done. Crenshaw High School, I think it was the last school built, I think it’s 69, or Kennedy in the Valley, and then it went 30 years. Roy Romer has done that, he’s elevated. I even have this vision, I may be cross-eyed, that one day, the mayor and the former governor of Colorado will stand together real soon to figure this whole thing out. But regardless of the point, there needs to be more review, I think, on this issue here. I appreciate all the work, and I really appreciate what you said, Jose, about the commissioners who you made that promise to that said it won’t be a report just on a shelf. I think the momentum is there for change, not just today, or in November, or in March, but in this period of time that we live in to see the importance of public education. And I tell you a story that I’ll save for another date, but I’ll tell you, it’s so important that we have this discussion, but I think it should be vetted a little more, and I think there’s some collisions of positive forces happening through your efforts, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Weisar, and that commission, but also the work of the mayor and the work of others to try to improve public education in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker, then Ms. Han, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Being a member of the Charter Commission, along with Councilmember Han, I know what it is to be brought into a process where you have expectations that something will be done. The elected Charter Reform Commission, we saw the finished product, there was the Appointed Commission, the Elected Commission, and they hashed it together, and we have the charter. So we’ve been there, Janice and I have been in that same position as volunteers of the community to try and do something good. And I see this whole process, I think everyone here agrees that we’ve got a problem we got to fix, and the mayor’s taken the lead from the city position to say, I’m going to take the bull, and I’m going to move forward with it. Now, the former president of the school board is one of our colleagues, who obviously is close to this than all of us, and he’s seen the frustration, he’s seen the matters that we haven’t been privy to, the board meetings and the other process that takes place. I also understand that the Citizen Commission doesn’t want to feel that it’s going to be sitting on a shelf collecting dust. We don’t want to move forward with a process that we don’t think is complete. The Neighborhood and Schools Committee hasn’t reviewed. The issue that troubles me the most is the compensation, the fact that they’re not getting compensated sufficient now. To me, that’s an issue that may have to be separated from it. So we have the process move forward, but that part comes out, and there’s, it’s like, it’s not, and I don’t know if Herb Weston said it, it wasn’t fully cooked, that there’s still issues. I don’t want to say I’m not for reform, because I am for reform, I think everyone is for reform, but we want to make it the right reform, and not just do something that may be another patchwork, because the district has had patchwork for many, many years, and it hasn’t proven successful, as we know the results from the fallout rate, the lack of graduates, and the parents that then throw their hands up and say, why wasn’t it done, and the billions of dollars that go into it. So I’m really torn between what the two authors, Alex Padilla, Jose Weisar, want to do with this, the commission, and what we need to do what’s best for the City of Los Angeles. I know we’re running a timeframe because of the election, but I think that what we look at for us, we talk about term limits and the salary compensation, which is not judged by us or not mandated by us, but another process, that hits. And then we’ve got this, and it looks like it’s about money, when it needs to be about the process to improve the educational system. So I just want to hear some more debate with my colleagues, but I’m really torn from the different components. The money thing, I think, turns off a lot of people. Reform, I think everyone agrees, we have to move forward with some type of reform. So I’m still listening to the debate and still uncertain, because it’s definitely a matter we want to see resolved, but I don’t think we have the full package before us to have convincing evidence that at this particular time, it’s the right move to make. But I do see that the financial package, that review of that, could be a big blockage for a lot of people that say we need to make some modification reform, and then the other component of the mayor and his mission and position on the issue of the L.A. Unified School District. Thank you.
Is there a second on that? Do we have a second?
The financial consideration.
You made a motion to take out the financial piece for now.
To take out the financial piece, yes, that is a motion.
Is there a second on that?
Can I pass just to one more?
Sure.
Who’s on the queue?
Mr. Reyes is after you. We do have public speaker cards, we have six of them.
Put me back one.
If Mr. Reyes and Ms. Han want to pause, we can take the public speaker’s cards out now? Okay. I’d like to invite Joyce Dillard, we’ll do two minutes per speaker. Joyce Dillard will be our first speaker.
I attended most of the commission meetings, and I’m not fully satisfied with what I saw, but even less so in this proposed charter amendment. There are some issues the city can address, but the Board of Education was set up originally, and this was maybe like 100 years ago, as school trustees, therefore they’re a state agency, and therefore we have an elected official, the State Superintendent of Schools. You’re now trying to cross over in this charter amendment to make them part of municipal officers. You have limited ability to do that, but certainly not in campaign finance. And with that, you’re also subjecting the city to a liability. But you’re also subjecting the other cities. You mentioned L.A. in here, but you know, a candidate doesn’t have to live in L.A. A candidate can live in any of the jurisdictions of L.A. Unified, which is another city or county. Compensation and term issues, I think, really need to be in a public forum. They were addressed in the governance, but really not addressed where everyone got to say. Very few people knew about the forum, it was at the MTA, it was hard to park, a lot of things that prohibit this from really outreach to the public. And I’d like to address the constitutionality issue. Going on with the discussion of the schools, and reform will always happen, I was part of Learn many years ago, is the constitutionality of the city’s involvement. There is, I believe it’s Article 9 of the state constitution, where public instruction is under the jurisdiction of the state, and consequently, that’s why it’s a state agency. And I think as the city crosses into this, you must realize you’re opening yourself out for lawsuits, which meets taxpayers’ expense. Why spend instead of waiting? This charter amendment, I don’t think, should be on this ballot at all. It really needs to be brought out publicly. It is a hot topic right now, but it’s a hot topic with a lot of people who want to get involved, and you’re going to cut that issue with this. So please reject it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dillard. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Can you just hold my time for a sec? Mr. City Attorney, can you tell me how much time I got left in this meeting? Because we haven’t had general public comment.
You have this full two minutes, go ahead. If you want to take a minute of this and save a minute for public comment, that’s fine.
Okay, let me yield my time on this one then to Zuma Dog. Thank you.
Okay, we don’t have yielding, but Mr. Zuma Dog does have a card in. Go ahead, Mr.
So I’ll be able to still have my own time on my own card, plus this, right?
No.
Matt yielding, but I still get my full two minutes.
There’s no yielding of the time. You have your card in right now, so I just call it on your card. Go ahead.
Oh.
Okay, we’ll set it two minutes.
Please, please stop for a second, I’m seriously confused. He yielded his time, does my time count under his?
There’s no yielding time, so we have two minutes for you right now.
Oh, okay.
So this will count as yours, if you want to use it.
Yes, I’m going to use it. Now, this is the most important issue, I want all the time on this. This is about the kids and money going to the kids, and I think some people are going to be wishing I was singing like the Bee Gees after I’m done with this. Councilmember Weston, Mr. Garcetti, I’d like to thank Councilmember Weston, I’m going to echo what he says, that the problem why this cannot pass, the citizens of Los Angeles need to know, we cannot have the term extensions on this till we find out what happens on AD 1381 with the proposed takeover of the mayor, L.S.U.S.D. Now, here’s why we cannot let the mayor take control. It gives him 80% weighted vote for the school district, he gets an 80% weighted vote. That means every other school mayor can vote against what the mayor vigorosa has to say, but he’s going to win every time. 80% wins 100% of the time. So then, he basically gets to hire the superintendent himself, because who’s ever up on the ballot, whoever he votes for is the one that gets elected. And beyond that, the superintendent has all business and spending power over facilities, even hires the inspector general. The person the mayor is going to be able to just steamroll through, the superintendent hires the investigative attorney general, who investigates fraud, waste, and abuse of the mayor. So you’re going to have the mayor picking the guy who picks the general, and then if the mayor doesn’t like the investigation, he says, hey superintendent, my homeboy, kill that guy’s budget, because he also has budget control power, and boy, oh, boy, I wish I had more time. So the thing is, this is going to allow, and then the mayor just takes all that money, it’s billions and billions and billions of dollars, and he just doesn’t give it to the kids for new school books, he gives it to his real estate developers. And so don’t be fooled to the Hispanic community who follows the mayor blindly, this is not good for the Latino community, it’s going to take money away from the kids and put it into the real estate developers, and it’s not transparent, and beyond that, it’s improper, the chain of command is improper. You can’t have the mayor be having 80% vote to put whoever his superintendent he wants in the school, when he’s, and the superintendent has all the power. I got so much more to say!
Thank you very much. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
I too agree with, wait, wait, I too agree with Zuma Dog. I don’t think nobody should have that much power in government, and I think that it was just displayed with the ACLU, too. Herb Weston do got a good point. Yeah, it’s not cooked, and you guys, and you guys should review it, all of the city officials should review it as well. And Herb Weston, good job on this one. I think that you ought to take your time, and everybody else should really review it before they give power to any one person or anything about that regarding city official business, and I hope you guys work this out, and I think that everybody should be involved in education, far as the children, even city council. All right, thank you.
Mr. Samuel Sanchez is next, and then Rolando Samara.
Raise your hand if you were brought up in the L.A. U.S.D. Thank you, thank you. Narbon High School in the house, what’s up? What’s up? Harbor City? Okay. I grew up in L.A. U.S.D. Around 10 years in there, and I seen firsthand the inequities and the disparities in school districts versus what district they’re in, or what city they’re in. I know that in non-Los Angeles school districts, such as Palos Verdes, or let’s take Miracoast High School, they get new books every year, you know? I know you guys have heard of a trickle-down effect, and let me just tell you, it’s all bull. It doesn’t work, and this will not trickle down to the students, and it will not, in the way it is written, it will not positively affect people like me, my attendants, or my brothers and sisters who also go to L.A. U.S.D. Furthermore, I don’t believe that one person or one entity could have the control over such a huge monster like the L.A. U.S.D., which should be broken up anyway. It’s enormous. I mean, if you just think about the vast area that L.A. U.S.D. covers, it’s mind-boggling that there’s even only one commission that meets on this. I mean, there should be like 10. It’s huge. The different districts have different needs, the different counties have different problems that arise. If the mayor can’t mitigate 14 acres of green space in the middle of South Central, how do you expect him to handle this monstrosity like the L.A. U.S.D.? how do you expect him to handle this monstrosity like the LAUSD? And how do you think that any of these propositions are going to affect the child that is going through the LAUSD school system? And who are you really thinking about when you're making these decisions? And who do you think it will positively affect and negatively affect?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rolando Samron.
Thank you for letting me express my opinion. Ladies and gentlemen, you are the leader of our city. You are responsible for the education of our kids in some ways, too, you know? And you have to realize what really happened with our system. It's not only from the '70s, '80s, '90s. We're still in the same thing. We are under people, students from Malaysia, from Philippines, from Vietnam. No, we don't have to talk about Italy or French. They are far ahead of us over there in technology and science. We had to reform this, and you have a lot to do with this, you know? We don't have to let the system to continue with the same way. We're going to have the same replacement that we have last year. At the beginning of this last year, the Congress approved 100,000 people that we're going to import from India, from Pakistan, from some other countries over there to replace our kids. And the top of 80,000 that we already have, we have 180,000 people that come to replace. That kid over there is going to be replaced later on if you don't put your hands, you know, trying to change the system that we have now. We don't give the right instruction. We had to go and restructure the whole system from the bottom, you know? And that is, you have to do that, because we don't want to let those kids later on, 10 years from now, that they're going to be replaced for another people. Yes, because you don't want to put your hand now in that thing. It's very important that you continue to do this work, and Mayor Rigoso is right. We had to put our hands in this, and you have to act now that the people want to change, you know? And want to change because the school, Mr. Parker's school over there, in 1985, we have a three years in a row that they didn't put any student in UCLA. And that's the same with many schools. We, yes, have those people that come from other countries.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. That closes our general public comment on this item. We'll return to council members. We have Councilmember Hahn, and then Councilmember Reyes, and then Councilmember Wezar.
Colleagues, I think, just listening to the debate on this item and listening to, you know, just a little bit of apprehension on the amount of a couple of our members, you know, how many of you have read the report from the commission? How many of you read the 54 recommendations? I had my own commissioner, Camilla Townsend, come in and see me yesterday, feeling like the hours and hours of work that they did has just been sort of swept under the rug. It has not been heard by any official body. And I think frankly, just having one co-chair here today and having Councilwoman Wezar sort of scan it for the recommendations that we should put on the ballot, I think it just doesn't do it justice. So what I'd like is to move that we send this item to education and neighborhoods. By the way, it's not my committee. I know I call it that. Alex Padilla is actually the current chair, but we know he's going to be gone in November. And--
He's still here and looks very healthy and rigorous.
And, you know, I will guarantee that once this is in, I will always affectionately call education and neighborhoods my committee. I will take the full report of the commission. I will consider having hearings around the city so that we can comprehensively really give it justice and take all the recommendations and decide which ones should go before the voters of the parents who have kids in LAUSD. So I ask you for your vote to send this to education and neighborhoods, this item. It has not been vetted. We have not heard it, and we've not discussed the hours and hours of work that this commission has done.
Is there a second to that? Mr. Weston, seconds. It'll be on the table. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I wish I could tell Councilman Wezar. I want to be there with him, because I know how hard they work, and I really would like to be there. But I hear our public speakers, Ms. Zillard and her observation about accountability on the financial side, that quite frankly, was not even my radar. But more importantly, more importantly, is to give the commissioners the ability to engage us, engage us on this discussion. It opens up the opportunity for us to improve our understanding from the mayor's office, you know, where, how can we work with him to attend to the needs of our young people in this city? It gives us that opportunity. March from November, four or five months, the kids deserve that attention. The kids deserve that analysis. The mayor could be supported even more in all his efforts. I think we all want to stand next to him when he gets off the plane from Sacramento to talk about what he's doing, because it affects all of our districts. So there is so much gray area here. I have yet to read the report. My understanding from one of my colleagues, or someone mentioned, it just got off from the printing press. So what respect are we giving our commissioners when we have yet to read the report and we're making this decision? So at many different levels, I want to be supportive for Mr. Wezar, but I just can't vote on it today. I think we need to push it forward. I think we need to focus on that report and talk about, have Mr. Fugioke talk to us about the fiduciary issues, and talk to the mayor about how we improve classroom instruction. How do we increase the graduation rates? And allow for that dialogue with the school board, and have Governor Romer come in and tell us how the new structures will enhance the curriculums, the environment for learning, because it's all connected. I believe our kids deserve that, and I believe they can deserve the four to five months that we're trying to push for.
Mr. Wezar.
I'm just sitting here kind of finding the humor in all of this. It's very simple. Do we want school board members to finally find and follow some ethic rules? Very simple. Every major institution in the United States has some kind of ethic rules they follow. Every major institution in the United States, public institution, has some form of contributions nowadays, because we've seen the danger there is when there are no contribution limits. Very simple. Term limits. Do you agree with them or not? Very simple. I haven't heard, with the exception of maybe one or two council members, strong anti-term limits. Very simple. Compensation review committee. If we want to review whether board members or how much they should be paid. Very simple. Whether we do it in November or March, we're going to be in the same place discussing this. Finally, let me just say this. Everyone talks about how urgent it is to improve education for our kids. Everyone talks about how this school district lacks that urgency. 50% dropout rate. Latinos, 60, 65%. African-Americans, 70%. Ridiculous. And we often talk about the urgency there is to make some changes at the school district. Here we have before us, and I find it kind of humorous that we're talking about whether we do it in November or March, something to say, let the city council show that we also feel that urgency to improve the school district. These things are minor compared to what needs to happen at the district. This is not really going to change immediately the student achievement levels. Yes, but it's going to continue to provide that momentum for us to create an environment by which we do have more accountability. These are not the answers. I'm not saying it's the answers, but it's going to help us bring some more accountability and transparency to the school district. Urgency. Urgency is November, it's not March. If we're true to our word that we want urgent changes at this school district, let's do it in November and not in March. One of the reasons why I did pick up on those proposed changes to our charter from the commission's report, and brought them right away, was because I felt that urgency to do it right away and not wait any longer and have this school district continue on this path of failure. Now, a few months, what's it going to change? There's an election coming up in March for school board members. We could either say, we feel the urgency, and we're going to apply these new rules to the elections in March, or we don't feel the urgency, and we're going to wait for these March elections to go by us.
Mr. Padilla, and then Mr. Weston, and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can ask the city attorneys to come forward, as well as the CLA, just had a couple of questions here that I'm hoping might further clarify the issue before us. And I know there's been a lot of council discussion on this item, but I think this is the first time staff has been brought up today to briefly summarize what's before us, and let me give you a couple of minutes to do that before I ask my questions. If you'll please hold my time, Mr. President.
Thank you. My name is Valerie Flores, and I manage the offices Public Integrity Division, and I'm here with my colleague, Karit Trevetti, who's one of our election experts. This measure is an empowering act. The California Constitution grants charter cities the authority to regulate the manner in which, the time at which, and the manner in which board members are elected and for their compensation. Currently, and those are the only things that a city can regulate relating to school board matters. They have to be put to a full vote of all of the residents in the district, not just the city. So only through the charter can these reforms be implemented. They can't be done through ordinance, and I know there's been some confusion about that. And the reason is so that all of the residents in the LA Unified can vote on the proposals. The gist of the proposals are basically three things. One, the proposal would be to impose upon school board members the same contribution limits that currently apply to Los Angeles City Council members, except it would be raised from $500 to $1,000 per contributor. And also some disclosure rules that currently apply to persons making expenditures on behalf of candidates or in opposition to candidates would be mandated under the proposal. The proposal also would impose a three-year term limit. Currently, the charter sets the terms of school board members at four years, but has no term limit. So under this proposal, there would be three terms allowed, and only three terms for a maximum of 12 years. And then lastly, there would be a compensation committee established to review and set the compensation for board members. Currently, the charter defers to state law on the compensation for board members, but the charter may specify a different rate of compensation. And this current proposal was modeled after a state constitutional provision which establishes a compensation review committee for state officials.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I guess the first couple of questions that I have pertain to the evolution of the legislation. Colleagues, it's been pretty clear that the mayor's efforts to push reform in LAUSD has evolved somewhat since he's been in office. During his campaign for mayor, his inauguration speech, soon thereafter, there was a lot of talk, not just of mayoral takeover of the school district, but specifically to forget the role of the school board, but about whether or not there would be a school board. Is that correct, Mr. CLA?
No. That is correct, yeah.
Okay. So at one point, there was discussion as to dissolving the school board, and then that went away. It became clear that, well, there's going to be a school board. Then, as the conversation, the debate evolved, it became a question of whether it would be an elected board or an appointed board. Is that correct, Mr. CLA? Okay. So now we have, flash forward to today, we have AB 1381, an assembly bill pending in the Senate, I believe the Appropriations Committee. Does the bill make reference to whether or not a school board will continue to exist?
Yes, in the current bill--
Please hold my time.
Yes, the current bill does provide that the school board will continue to exist.
Okay. Will it be an elected or an appointed school board?
It will be elected.
An elected school board. So colleagues, I'm going to expand a little bit on a comment I made last time this item was before us. Regardless of what happens with the mayor's bill, if it's successful or if it's not successful, there will be a school board. Regardless if the mayor's legislation is successful or not, there will be a school board. And I think it's imperative that we continue to push forward reforms that will ensure as effective and productive of a school board under any scenario. Now, our city attorney just described the various elements of the bill. Term limits, contribution limits, and the compensation component. The compensation component, there's already been, in my opinion, somewhat of a concession. In lieu of setting new levels of compensation, we're moving forward or proposing to move forward with this compensation review commission. The other two components, term limits or contribution limits, do they, Mr. CLA, in your analysis, conflict at all with AB 1381 and its contents?
No. At this point, we're not aware of in any way dealing with term limits or compensation in the proposed bill.
Okay. And if there's anybody from the mayor's office who'd like to come forward and speak to the item before us, the only information we're hearing, colleagues, from our staff, from our chief legislative analyst, that there are no conflicts with what we're proposing today and AB 1381. If there's anybody who has a different opinion than that, I'd like to hear that. But short of that, I appreciate the comments that have been made regarding the timing, and I'll come back to that in a second. But the comments that have been made today regarding, are we moving forward with these council proposals, or are we going to allow time for the fate of AB 1381 to be determined, in my opinion, is not the right question, because the information before us tells us they are not in conflict. If anything, I think the measures we're proposing today further strengthen, further augment, the mayor's efforts via AB 1381 if it was to be successful. And to end on this point, the urgency. I don't think anybody could have said it clearer than how Mr. Wezar said it just a few minutes ago. We've been talking and talking and talking about the urgency to improve the performance of the LA Unified School District for our kids. And I walk in here today, and I hear debates and arguments as to why we should not act or allow the voters to act in November, and why we should wait until March. To me, that's not acting urgently. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Weston is next, and then Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Members, I wanted to ask Mr. Wezar, I didn't hear Mr. Wezar's response to the amendment that Councilwoman Hahn submitted. She suggested that this go to her committee, and so I, but I didn't hear where you were on that issue.
Yeah. I-- To what committee? To her, to what committee? Her committee?
I'm sorry. I keep, now she's got me calling it her committee.
Mr. Padilla's committee. Education and Neighborhood, Mr. Padilla.
Oh, what do you chair, Ms. Hahn? No, no. What committee do you chair?
Executive official chair.
Vice chair.
The permanent one.
No, I think, you know, we could have it go to her committee, and tomorrow in a special meeting, and come back the day after and voted it for November. I'd be supportive of that.
Okay. Now I understand your position. Thank you for answering. Members, I want to get up and clarify something, because there are certain things that have been said that I think that are just flat-out wrong. I don't want anybody to believe that this council is not supportive of reform. Not one person who rose to say that they had concerns about this issue suggested that they didn't want reform. And I will also say to you that for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. I learned that from your father, Janice, and haste sometimes make waste. We've got a document that allegedly has 54 suggestions. The thing has just been printed. We haven't had an opportunity to read it. I mean, let's, I mean, let's do this the right way. Do I want reform? Yes, I want reform. I want our kids to get a better education. I'm concerned about the dropout rate between African-Americans, and I'm concerned about the dropout rate where it relates to Latinos. But I want to do this in a methodical, step-by-step process. And just because you term-limit somebody, that doesn't mean you're going to get better performance from the members. And just, I don't think I've ever heard a school board member being accused of taking too much money to do something with. So I guess what I'm saying, other than disclosure, where is the reform? I think this is part of the package, and if we-- the reform? I think this is part of the package, and if we were to look at what else is in the document, that we could fashion some reform that makes sense. Slow down. Do it right.
Ms. Hahn.
I call for the question on my motion.
Well, you're the last speaker, so the, if there's no objection, the question is called. We have a number of items before, Mr. Weezer? We have to take a vote on calling question if there is another speaker. So, before, you do want to speak one more time?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
It's just, yeah, I mean...
Hold on one second.
Point of information, let me use a, it's a point of information. I want to clarify, it's going to the education, the motion is to take, to put it to the Education and Neighborhood Council's committee?
Yes, that was the motion before us.
And when is that meeting, when is that committee meeting again?
I think the next meeting is sometime this week, Mr. Padilla. Is that correct? Friday right now, scheduled for?
The motion is to send it back to Education and Neighborhoods?
Yeah. Who seconded that, by the way?
Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson second, Ms. Hahn moved. Be Friday morning, okay?
When is the deadline to vote for something?
August 11th is the last date we have, but if there's a mayoral veto, that doesn't give any time potentially for override.
August 4th is the deadline for council to vote on the resolutions and for the ordinance.
August 4th is the last day for council to vote.
On the resolutions for...
You're assuming a non-unanimous going to a second reading?
That, no, for the resolutions, it's August 4th. For the ordinance, it would be non-unanimous.
All right, and then 11th is when we communicate to the county registrar recorder.
That's correct.
Okay.
So essentially, it would kill the, the motion if we send it to committee. I just want to make sure what we're doing. If we send this to committee, we will kill it, and it would not have time to get on the, on the November ballot. That's, that's what this is doing.
We have, we have a motion to call the previous question. If, that can either be done or voted on, but we, we can't have any more discussion. So, do you want to vote on that, Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Okay. The previous question, which is just a motion to end debate. So, yes vote is to end debate, a no vote is to continue debate. And we have Ms. Hahn and Mr., well, Ms. Hahn, this was, that, did you want to speak again, Ms. Hahn?
No.
We have, we just have Mr. Weezer left in the queue, so, okay. So, please open the roll. Again, a yes vote is to end debate, no vote is to continue, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay. That is, that closes debate. So we have the motion that is before us, the first motion that is before us. Mr. Zine had a motion, but I don't believe there was a second on that. Is that correct, Mr.?
Mr. President, the first motion before council is the motion by Councilmember Hahn, seconded by Mr. Wesson, to send the matter to the Education and Neighborhoods Committee.
Okay. All right. Anybody unclear? Any points of information? If not, let's open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 6 noes.
That fails. Next.
Then before council is the substitute motion by Mr. Weezer, seconded by Mr. Padilla, with the new ordinances and resolutions.
Okay. And there are no other motions on that? Okay, we have, yes, Mr. Labange.
I, I'm voting on something I haven't seen the report on. Can this be continued one day, so maybe I could see the report? We vote on it tomorrow?
You can make a motion to continue.
I will be continued one day.
Okay. We have a motion to continue. Is there...
There a second?
Second from Mr. Zine. Mr. Weezer?
I, in the interest of us...
This is on the motion. Folks can press their speaker buttons on the motion.
In the interest of the council coming up to a better understanding of what is going on, I would support us continuing it for one day. But let me make this very clear. The commission came out with a report that it's been working on for over a year. These are just three recommendations from that report. That's all it is. All those other recommendations are not even within our jurisdiction. It's within the LUSD Board of Education jurisdiction to implement. It's very simple. We're bringing this today in order to meet the deadline for November, which, whether you agree with it or not, we believe we got to build in the momentum to go with November. But in the interest of this council to have a better understanding between now and tomorrow about what that is and what that means, I would support us continuing this till tomorrow.
Okay. Is there an objection? If there is, then we will assume it's not unanimous, and we'll take a vote on it. Is there an objection to continuing one day? Okay. So there's, there is an objection. We will vote on the continuation. A yes vote is to continue one day. A no vote is to not continue it. And it's still, it'll still be before us, and we will still need to vote. Okay, one at a, one at a time. Ms. Hahn?
Yes, since you allowed Mr. Weezer to do a point of clarification. Colleagues, a point of clarification is, this report from the joint commission has not even been transmitted to the city council. There is no council file. This has not been formally transmitted to us. How many of us have met with our commissioners? How many of us know what is in this report? And these 54 recommendations, frankly, can all be put before the voters. We have the authority to put everything before the voters. So, you know, one day, I don't believe is going to have us have a better understanding of the entire package of reforms and accountability that this commission deserves to have heard before this body. I think we're shortchanging the hours and hours of work that they did by delaying this even a day.
Okay. On points of clarification, Mr. Labange.
Mr. City Clerk, I was asking for a day's continuance based on a 7 and 7 vote. I voted no on this matter, because I think it should go to committee. That was my thinking on that matter here. If I withdraw my motion now, okay, then what is before us? I got to have that...
The current motion before you is to continue this one day, but it has not yet been voted on.
But if you withdraw that...
If I withdraw my motion...
We are voting on the, what has been communicated to us from the city attorney.
If you do withdraw your motion, then what's before you is the amending motion that substitutes with all the other...
And then if, if there's no prevailing vote on either side, then it...
Then pursuant to Rule 53, it would go over one day.
Unless somebody receives and files it, it stays with council unless somebody receives and files it, if it does not pass.
Mr. Wesson, I appreciate your work on, on this here, and I would withdraw my motion if it meant that this matter would then go to committee, okay, because I think it should be vetted on. But I understand that. That's been voted on. So, Mr. Clerk, you got to help me. Should I withdraw my motion?
The motion, the motion to send it to committee failed.
Failed.
The new motion that you made, that you're now wanting to withdraw, is to continue it one day.
Okay.
So what's before the council, if you withdraw your motion, is the amending motion and the new ordinances.
Okay. So, okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion, then we'll vote on the whole matter, and then we'll see what happens. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this? Okay. If not, we now have before us a motion. If we can please open the roll. This, this is the ordinance, the, well, the instruction...
So this is Mr. Weezer asking for an aye vote, right? And this is me asking on, for a no vote.
Presumably, yes. Okay, everybody's clear what they're voting on? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
6 ayes, 7 noes.
That fails. We now have this returning to us unless somebody wants to receive and file, continue, or refer to committee again. Those motions could be before us again. Any one of those three, otherwise, this will carry over till tomorrow. Ms. Hahn?
No.
Okay. If anybody wishes to move anything else, if not, it'll carry over to tomorrow. Okay? Mr. Parks?
I'd like to have a reconsideration for 32. We have some technical language from the city attorney on the development agreement.
Okay. We can open the roll on reconsideration, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and that is back before us.
Yes.
Would you like to take that up, Quina?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the development agreement between the LA City and the LA Coliseum, there was two minor technical changes we need to make, and the city attorney will read them in the record.
Thank you. This is Laura Catigan for the City Attorney's Office. The first of the technical changes is in Section 1.11. It's the definition of home team covenant. The section that used to read, "The NFL agrees to play substantially all of its home games at the Coliseum for no less than 15 consecutive seasons," shall now read that "The NFL agrees to play substantially all of its home games at the Coliseum for 15 consecutive seasons or as otherwise provided in the Coliseum lease." In Section 1.16, subsection 2, the parenthetical at the end of that section should be removed, such that that section should read, "Modifications to the existing Coliseum seating resulting in a maximum of 80,500 seats, including general seating, club seating, and luxury suite seating." Parentheses, "Including temporary immovable seats," close parentheses. In subsection C, the phrase "up to" should be inserted before the word "approximately," such that that section will read, "The seating total includes the addition of up to approximately 200 new luxury suites." And that is the total of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask that we vote on this again and get a unanimous vote to get this moving? Certainly, the NFL is aware of the document, supportive of the document. The Coliseum Commission has negotiated this document, and we'd ask for an aye vote.
Mr. Labange?
Question, is the issue of the potential for the Olympic Games returning to Los Angeles reflected in this at all?
The limited what?
The, the issue of the Olympic Games returning to Los Angeles.
The, the issue of the Olympic Games, the stadium, whether it's the current stadium or a new stadium will accommodate the Olympic Games.
Including the current Memorial Coliseum and 39th Figurale.
Yes, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Now we come to general public comment. Next, if we can start, and we'll try to hear first from Far Canell. Is Far Canell here? Going once, going twice. All right. Our next speaker is Sylvia Hawkins. Sylvia Hawkins here. Okay. Next, Zuma Dog. I think you have one minute left in your six, so...
First of all, I'd like to remind everybody that that anti-Zuma Dog law you just voted in is not in effect. It is not in effect yet, so I can still do these things, and now I'm going to make it worse. Mr. City Attorney, you've never heard me say the F-word since I've been here, right? Is it allowed?
I'm, I'm not sure if I've heard you say that.
I would ask you, please, Mr. Dog...
Is it still allowed?
I would ask you, please, not to...
But is it allowed?
If it's used as an obscenity, no.
So I can say, you, you said you can say F the draft, right? So I could say that I think it fucking sucks that I got cut off last week for funds.
Mr. President, if you make a finding that he's causing any disturbance or disrupting the meeting, he can be warned.
Didn't you say it? You said it today.
Please, Mr. Dog, I would ask you one more time to please...
I will respect that. I will, because I respect it. I was trying to make a point, just realized. Now, can I open a dialogue with Mr. City Attorney, please? Because what happened was I was cut off for saying, "Transfer of funds, can I ask a question?" And I didn't get a warning. I was cut off. That's a civil suit, and I thank you. I'll be talking to you afterwards. I appreciate your time, Mr. City Attorney. We have some real problems going down here at City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. Wow, we got a real vote just went down there, and that's nice to see. And I and the LA Times owe Greg Smith an apology, especially the LA Times, because they printed, they looked into the records that you, they couldn't find a no vote on the trash. But I went through the tape, and I watched it, and there it was. And their apology is forthcoming in tomorrow's paper, I can assure you. Venice Beach, we're here again, unconstitutionalities, the permits. It's the same thing with, with the restraint of free speech in the chambers. We already proved the point. The ACLU is here. But as far as Venice Beach, Bill, we need to have someone, once again, go over that. We filed. You can, you can, you know, what I'm upset about is nobody ever actually replied to my original letter. Still, Mark Antonio Grant, every time I see him, "Oh, we don't have an answer on that. We don't have an answer." I went to shake his hand at the beach. He wouldn't even shake my hand.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Cole Hunt.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm back on the record now. Hey, we won one victory with the ACLU. Hey, Bill, we on our second victory. We got 25 lawsuits with the United States Western District Court on the First Amendment issue. It's getting costly for you guys now. I'm the legal analyst for the Outlaws. Everybody think that we don't have any backbone to our, our, our being here, but that's not true. We are looking forward in the, in the court of law to take this issue up with the First Amendment. I don't think nobody's First Amendment issue should be violated and things like that. You got an article that said handcuffed in Venice, that went over out to 50,000 African Americans, and we signed it for you, Bill. They arrested me Friday for walking on the beach, quiet as kept. But hey, listen, they did it with Nelson Mandela, any great speakers, anybody who put up any confrontation with the city of Los Angeles, they arrested. So, you know, I'm looking forward to it, you know, and this is like the number 25, but thank you.
Thank you. Todd Hayes is our next speaker. And thank you for pointing out the suspension of rules, things which I can address afterwards. Please go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
The city of Los Angeles poured concrete from, from Hill Street down to Broadway. It has footprints and bicycle tire tracks on it. Councilman Parks was responsible for getting us our beautiful bus stops along City Hall. Wonderful sheet of glass about 15 feet, etched with rectangles in it. It has been etched and scratched by tigers and graffiti artists. Why? Because in both instances, the city has no provisions, prohibitions about peeling in sidewalks with concrete that will last hundreds of years, and making sure nobody puts their name in there for immortality's sake. We do not have contracts with public works or general services where if you put in glass, exposed to the, to the public, that you must put a sacrificial coating on it, a piece of plastic. They can do with it as they will, and you peel it off, put another one up, or let it stay there so they can keep accumulating graffiti. We do not protect these things. Why? So, you can talk about violating First Amendment rights all you want, but can you take care of simple matters like protecting our buildings, our sidewalks?
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you. Candido Morris is our next speaker. Candido Morris here anymore? Okay. Richard Robinson.
Honorable President, members, Richard Robinson. There's a difference between intelligent and educated. Sir, ever since President Bush's father established the United Negro College Fund, educational opportunities for blacks has been a certainty. However, there are more young black men entering our jails and penitentiaries than our universities. Now that economic certainty for our nation is a certainty, President Bush is nearing his father's goal of removing us from slavery. Because being intelligent is not the same as being educated, there are many PhDs who cannot cross the street by themselves, I support Mayor Villarogosa and his determination to reform the education system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Linda Piera Avila is next. Is Ms. Piera Avila here? Samuel Sanchez, next speaker.
Well, I don't wonder why a lot of the names you called aren't here. It's because you pushed the public comment back towards the end of the meeting. I remember constant times where you guys touted, "I'm so glad that we have moved public comment to the front so that we can hear our, our community." Well, I don't know what's going on, but maybe I do. I'd also like to thank those of you who are here and paying attention for, for listening to me. I'd like to speak on two items in my 30 seconds. One, one of the things in item 55 said, "No sitting or standing in the aisles." Ms. Donna Doherty has been waiting here all day to speak about the Griffith Park Observatory handicap access rules, and that would allow, that would deny a wheelchair from being in the aisle, because you can't sit or stand in the aisle. So, wheelchairs can't be in the aisle. Another thing, AQMD, Ms. Perry would know this, has said that South Central has one of the worst air qualities in the country. So why did we stand idly by and not make any motions to save the farm?
Thank you. Donna Doherty is our last speaker for public comment.
Good afternoon, everybody. I did want to thank all of you for being here for the 11th of July meeting about Griffith Observatory. I wanted to thank Councilman Labange, especially for getting all of those people together. But I did also want to say there are a great number of strange statements he made here. Absolutely, the front four doors can be automated. It is a simple... It is a simple thing to do, and I knew that in April of 2000 after speaking to the electrical engineer of the building, and Brenda Levin told me to talk to him. That was also backed up by another preservation architect. Simple thing to do. A little box above the door holds the mechanism. Aside from that, how is it if we have so many million people expected to come that we can no longer take the cars up there, but we have to pay everybody $5 apiece for a bus? Why are we all going in one door on the backside of the west wing, which was designated two years ago to be the path of travel for disabled access? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. I'm going to reconsider the item from Friday. Do we have the number of that, Mr. Clerk? No, it's not. Oh, Mr. Rosenthal, we're considering, okay. It was item 44 from the Friday's agenda. Mr. Dog, if you'd like to come forward again and address this on that. We have to vote on reopening it first. If we can please open the roll on reconsideration in a second. We're just going to type it in.
And for the record, the motion to reconsider was by Mr. Rosenthal.
By Mr. Rosenthal.
And I'll read the agenda item, number 44 from Friday. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's open the roll on, do we have that in now? Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen I's.
Okay, that's back before us, and if you can please read what it is, and then reopen public comment for-
This is the agenda description from Friday, Mr. Dog. Item 44, motion relative to a transfer of funds to permit the Bureau of Street Services to continue clearing falling tree limbs.
Go ahead. Please.
I'll be much more deliberate and make sure I don't cut it together too closely. President Garcetti, can I ask a question? Transfer of funds. May I ask you a question? Where is the transferring coming from? The problem with these agendas, people, the public can't tell where they're coming and where they're going to. So can I first start off by having you mention that to me?
As a point of information for anybody, you can always click online, and there are the attached reports to that, so we advise people before they come here, they can get that, or over at the chief legislative analyst over to the side. So I don't have that before me right now, but that's available to public. So anytime you have anything, or any member of the public has anything, you can always ask over there, or click it online now.
Well, I come here, you know, just, you popped it up, and I didn't, I don't have a computer access with me. I was just wondering. So then I guess I'm going to say I am against transferring of funds. Oh, this is the one from South Central? Is this the one that want to transfer funds from South Central LA and put it into a mural project? That's what it is. That's right. I say do not take money from South Central Los Angeles for things. They're trying to raise the rates of the trash collection. They want to raise the rates of the trash collection. It's going to make the small business owners have to pay more money, and you want to transfer funds from those people and put it for some mural project? You know, I just don't think that's right. It's all the same thing. Anyway, why don't we just have a nice day since this, I was caught by surprise on this, and I'll use the rest of my, oh, I'll use the rest of my time to sing a song about the trees. I wake up in the morning, and I blaze it up. Then I have some cocoa pebbles, and I blaze it up. Then I smoke myself a crown-
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Appreciate it. We were informed also it's not coming out of South Los Angeles as a point of information. It's just within the Bureau of Street Services. Okay? And that will close public comment on that. Mr. Rosenthal, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. And then, Mr. Parks?
The city attorney has made it clear, this was the obvious moving of monies to do the tree limbs and other branches that fall down in the heat. It was within the existing budget, and it was just moving it forward because of the hot weather we had. Bill Robertson keeps a good tab on all of that. That's what that was.
And thank you for reconsidering it, Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Parks, is it on this item or a different? Okay. Let's open the roll on this one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen I's.
That is approved. Send that forthwith, please. And, Mr. Parks?
Forthwith on 32.
On 32, if there's no objection either, we'll send that forthwith. Now's the time for announcements, colleagues. Oh, no, sorry, we have some housekeeping before that, Mr.-
Council has motions for posting referral.
Let's post and refer those.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, Ms. Hahn?
I just want to remind everybody, August 1st is always National Night Out across the country. Neighborhoods all over are taking the opportunity to do something as basic as saying thank you to their police officers and their firefighters. I don't think we have time today to list all the events going on in the city. I have several in my district. Just want to encourage everybody to find out where those events are and go out and support your police officers and firefighters tonight. It's happening all over the country. It's a great time for us to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange? Okay. Other announcements? Mr.-
I just want to agree with that, and we're doing it at Venice High School tonight at 6 o'clock, and the community is going to show up for that. We're going to especially remember Augustine Contreras, who was killed in the parking lot there. It's a great night for us to be in solidarity with our police and fire.
Great. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
I just want to echo the thanks to the community leaders. It's a lot of volunteer work, many restaurants stepping up, folks sharing on this gesture of goodwill, and as a result, we hope to enhance our communication and confidence in women and women in blue, and as much as with the community.
Thank you. Any other National Night Out?
You know, also in northeast of your area, Mr. Garcetti there-
Red River Park.
Right there at the Red Car Park, and then also at the Hollywood Civic Center in the North Hollywood area, Wilshire throughout.
And Rampart Police Station will also have its great event on Temple as well, as they usually do. On National Night Out, Ms. Berry, and then Mr. Zain.
We have three in the 9th District, one on the 1300 block of 41st Street, at Central Division at the Central Station, and then at All Peoples Christian Center on 20th Street.
Okay. Mrs. Zain?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to have for the Southwest Valley, instead of having separate locations, we're going to have one big location anticipating about 2,000 residents, posse members. It's going to be at the park adjacent to West Valley Police Station, Van Owen and Wilbur in the park, and there will be food, and the mayor will be joining us along with a number of other dignitaries. So six tonight, West Valley Park, Van Owen, and Wilbur in the Southwest San Fernando Valley for all Southwest Valley residents.
Thank you. Any other National Night Out? Mr. Reyes?
National, this is about Plum.
Okay.
Will begin at 2:15.
Plum will begin at 2:15. Other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions, please? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise as well. Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that you all join me today in adjourning for Colonel J. George Sisneros, who died on July 28th. He was a retired colonel. He passed away at the age of 89 years old, and he was born on February 13th, 1917, in Roy, New Mexico. He is the grandfather of Teresa Sisneros Burton, a city attorney here, and Henry Sisneros, well-known to many of us. He was preceded in death by his parents, 10 brothers, and one sister, and survived by his wife of 60 years, Alveda, and children Henry, his wife Mary Alice, Pauline Sisneros Paulette, George and his wife Catherine, Tim and his wife Carla, and Tina Corser and her husband Tom, nine grandchildren, three grand, sorry, three great-grandchildren, numerous nieces, nephews, and many friends. Colonel Sisneros served in the US Army for 39 years. He served in the World War II, he served in the Korean War, and Vietnam War. Here in various service medals, including the Bronze Star, which is a very high honor, the Combat Infantry Badge, Asiatic Pacific Medal, American Defense Medal, and the World War II Victory Medal. He received two George Washington Honor Awards from the Freedom Foundation at Valley Forge for his armed forces letters. And during his tenure in the service, he was awarded eight commendations for outstanding performance by the Department of the Army. He attended San Antonio College, where he had completed his associate's degree, and attended Our Lady of the Lake University. He began his civil service career in 1946, which resulted in serving as the Chief of Staff for the 90th US Army Reserve at Dodfield at Fort Sam Houston in the 70s. His illness did not keep him from giving to the community with his involvement in numerous organizations. Colonel Sisneros had had a stroke, but he was the co-founder of the Alamo Area Stroke Club. He served as an assistant reading teacher for 18 years at Crockett Elementary School, and he served on the Board of Directors for the Boys Club. He also organized a one-armed golf group to share his love of the game with others recovering from strokes. He received numerous medals for his community service, and there's many that we'll submit here to the city clerk, but he loved his hobbies, golf, gardening, woodworking, and reading, and especially history books. The family will receive friends from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM today at Roy Akers Zizik Kern's Funeral Chapels. This is in San Antonio. A rosary will be recited at 7:00 PM at the Basilica of the National Shrine of the Little Flower. The Sisneros family has given so much to this country, and I know as the father of Henry Sisneros, that Colonel Sisneros is one of those rare men who gave so much to his community, his country as well, and our feelings and thoughts are with the entire family. Mr. Bede, did you want to second that, too?
Just one second.
Yeah, okay, we'll do all members on that. Mr. Labange?
Members, I wanted to make sure, held this only because I wanted our colleague, Mr. Parks, to join with me in this. Bud Ferrillo on the 18th of July passed. He was a titan of sports writing. He was raised in Ohio and came out here, went to Bell High School, went with John Farrar to high school as well for the Eagles, and he was the greatest sports writer, sports editor, that the Herald Examiner or anybody ever saw around here. Worked for the Herald Express first, then when they merged in '62, went there and was on KABC Radio. Just a wonderful, unique individual who got to know the players and got to write them in such a way. There's nobody like that anymore. All the writers that they have now, sports writers, the Titans are joined up in heaven with Bud Ferrillo and Jim Murray and Malamud, Alan Malamud, and all of them. So I ask we adjourn in his memory, survived by three beautiful daughters and three beautiful sons, Bud Ferrillo.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Zain?
All members on it.
Mr. Ferrillo, please.
A city employee, David Dezon, passed away July 30th. David was born October 24th, 1954, passed away Sunday, July 30th. He was the Information Technology Agency's 311 Call Center Director since August 2003. 1983, earned a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology from California State University Fullerton.